I'd like to call the March 25th, 2014 Longmont City Council to meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos. Mayor Coombs, we have a form.
Okay, I'm gonna have a Boy Scout troop, a 760, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Come on down front.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I'm wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public, first invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard on any agenda items at the end of the meeting. Is there any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, we have no agenda revisions or minutes.
Okay. Is there a report from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the council, I want to draw your attention to the flood recovery overview sign that you see to your right. Wanted to let you all know that we have placed 10 of those signs through various locations in the community at parks. And as you can see, it provides an overview of the activities that we're working on. And we have, it allows us also to put the done stickers on those as we're moving through the projects. We will have one of those signs located here at the civic center. And they are graffiti proof, so if that happens, they can wipe it off. But I wanted to let you know that we're moving forward with this process. The phase began several weeks ago, and we're trying to put all of these signs out that identifies each area of a flood recovery, provides a web address, phone number for the public to get more information. In addition, the phone number actually goes into the Public Works and Natural Resources call center so they can get up-to-date information from that staff. So I just wanted to point that out, let you know that you will see them. And then based on some emails from Public Works and Natural Resource staff, almost as soon as they get it out, there have been a number of folks gathering around looking and getting information. So we were really happy to see that.
Okay. Hey, the first person on the list, public invited to be heard, is Sean M., so please come down and state your name and address for the record.
Sean M. Collier Street. I'm not gonna give my full name or address because it's already been out there enough. I don't really wanna talk about my lovely neighbors because I've spent enough time talking about them. But let me just say that we really thank the police department for everything they've done, not just me, our whole block. I've actually gotten more flack for showing appreciation to the police department than anything else, which is ironic. But anyway, I don't wanna talk about them. What I would like to talk about is, I do my patrol, you might say. It's basically just walking my dog up past the church, up and down Main Street, the alley. And I noticed that the pedestrian experience could be greatly improved in this lower downtown area. Main Street, lot of cars, a lot of exhaust. Takes a long time to cross the street at Main Street. If you have a stroller or a dog, if you space out for two seconds, you missed your window. The point being, I think that is one of the main reasons why it's kind of underperformed for its entire life, as far as I could tell from my research. And I see the new Roosevelt Park apartments, which look awesome. I just saw that the Butterball Turkey Plant, maybe, hopefully, something's gonna happen there. And I think you guys all really wanna revitalize Longmont, especially right here. This is the heart. So I wanna ask you to just think about a goal, an end result that you want. I know what I want. It's super clear to me, after all the experiences I've been through, it's just the film is removed from my eyes. I know what we need. We need a downtown where you can sit outside, drink a beer, maybe at the pump house, you know? People sit outside there, but I don't see enough people in the cafes and the restaurants sitting outside. It should be just packed always. And I think if we had less traffic, if it was just less of a car culture, we would have that. You know, we don't have stop signs on Collier Street. There's the church, the library, and Main Street, and there's no stop signs going north-south. I don't know why. There's a four-way stop at Kimbark and forth, but not Emery and not Collier when you have hundreds of people walking past there all the time. I'm gonna go to the Lower Downtown Development Meeting tomorrow and make my case probably a lot stronger, but that's it.
Thank you. Jim, Hergen Rutter? I probably butchered it, but... Just repeat your name and address.
Jim Hergen Rutter. Pace and Ninth is pretty close, so 1358 Trail Ridge. But I'm actually here to talk about some property that we share on the border with the city farm, East of Town, where the oil pipelines are getting put in. And really, I'm here for requests of information from you. And who is the person that is dealing with the oil company from the city? Because some of the rumors of where the pipeline is going really don't quite make sense because it's next to an easement that we have that exists on your property as well. So, and then the road that it's on is actually Road Five in Well County, north of Road 288 in Well County. So that's the road that goes around the north side of Union Reservoir. So basically, if you can forward or have somebody give me the card of who's dealing with him, I'd sure like to voice a few things to him. Because I think the whole scenario, whether it ends up on our property or yours, the darned oil pipelines shouldn't parallel a future 55 mile an hour road either, right next to it.
Okay, well, the person on your right could probably can't give you a card.
What's your name?
I'm out of cards, I haven't seen.
Dale. Dale can help you.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. Wendell Pickett?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm gonna just briefly comment on 11B, the request for the proposal for study for fees for development. And, well, it seems like a lot of money, and it's something that's probably overdue. I think that we ought to really consider the question of, not only are we competitive and how can we be more competitive, but what is it the fee supposed to justify and pay for? And whether that's, what's the benefit of that development? So I'd like you to, you know, consider whether staff does it in-house or they do it with a consultant. It seems like this is a fairly expensive study to have that done. And that we really, if we go down that route of reviewing all these, really take a hard look at where can we not only be competitive, but justify, you know, lowering fees and decreasing the cost of delivering housing units to the markets and other commercial properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Goff?
Mayor, Council, Bob Goff, 461 Main. A few months ago, I came before this council to talk about a letter that was left at my restaurant by a professional political activist, Polly Christensen. I came to this body a few months ago to explain my positions and concerns and to show that I was not intimidated by this progressive organization. Two weeks ago, I was visited by a representative of this organization and a campaign advisor for Polly. I was told they are still unhappy with me for the following reasons. One, were my inflammatory remarks to this body. And two, was a campaign contribution that I made to Brian Baum's campaign. I was told that at that time, if I was to meet with Polly, I could start to make amends and maybe these screws would be loosened a little bit on my business. In good faith and as a service to the community, I opened my doors to various elected officials, the vast majority of whom were Democrats. The meetings were well-attended, ironically, by some of the same people boycotting me. I guess as long as I post signs for their approved candidates or hosting Democrats, it's okay to be involved in politics. I would characterize their behavior as that of a petulant child, although a petulant child does not engage in political intimidation and bullying to silence opposing views. I'm surprised they haven't resorted to holding their breath. It is apparent that Polly is part of a well-organized political group with an agenda which serves their own interests and not the citizens of Longmont. It makes Polly's apology for being politically naive ring hollow. I believe her handlers decided this was the best way to spin it. To this day, I'm still thormixed by the behavior of Polly and her group, why they came into my restaurant except to bully and intimidate, not to apologize, and I have yet to receive an apology from Polly. It is apparent to me that the voters of Longmont were duped. I believe that the only way for you to put an end to this sad chapter is to resign, put the interests of the citizens of Longmont ahead of you and your group's agenda. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I would like to respond. I'm not part of some, I am not a professional political activist. I do not have a campaign advisor. I'm not part of a well-organized group. I don't have any handlers. I don't have a crew. I am vaguely aware of a conversation that you had several weeks ago. I do not know what happened, or who said what, because I wasn't there. This is a politi, this is, this is supposed to be a, a public forum for a discussion of, by Longmont citizens of public policy. It's not supposed to be a forum for junior high-level gossip and the citizens and personal attack.
I'd just like to say that, I was very honest with myself behind this, and I'm more than 9% positive that Polly had nothing to do with, you know, whoever came to practice that. So I blame some shoes behind it, but anyway. My question is, Stan Scaram?
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. Steve Strong, 1615 Starion Circle. I've got two things to comment on. One, the item B that Wendell was talking about. Because of the flood, in the construction industry, we are experiencing increased costs in all our civil work, all of our groundwork, foundations, concrete, things like that. So our, our construction costs are going up about 20%. It's kind of an unintended consequence of a disaster. So when you go, if you go forward with it, in my opinion, that's a real expensive study. But you guys understand what you're doing, and I leave that in your hands. But be very careful, please, to, in dealing with any fees that you could potentially come out of raising that. We're fighting, as you well know, the lack of housing and affordable housing. And any, any costs that go up just hinders those, hinders what we're trying to accomplish there. So just please be real sensitive when you get to that issue. The other one is the issue with Bob and Polly. And I guess, I hope this dies down, goes to sleep, but as I brought up to you before when it first happened, this is an example of what happens when politics starts to mix, bipartisan starts to mix its fingers in the city council. And I, and I know it happens, but we need to fight hard to make sure on both sides that there's not aisles, there's not partisanship in the city council. And I know your hearts are in the right place and a volunteer job for the most of you, and I know you're working hard and a lot of hours. But please, if you, if people wanna start to bring that up, do your best to squelch it and keep this a nonpartisan position. Thank you very much. And I'm proud of what you're doing. You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Deborah Whitcomb?
Hi, I'm Deborah Whitcomb at 322 Vivian Street. I have a speech here that I was going to read word-for-word, but due to some of the previous speakers, I am changing it up a little bit. But I am here to address one of your councilpersons, Polly Christensen. And she just dropped her shoulder, so I'm sorry about that. And I am an employee at Auburn Bonza Pizzeria. I have worked there for five and a half years. And I was there the night that you left the note, your not infamous note, informing Bob that you will no longer patronize this establishment due to endorsing a candidate that you did not want to succeed in the election. Upon writing that note, I felt it was out of line, and I thought the person who wrote it didn't understand the political process. But when I found out it was you, I became angry. As far as I know, and what I studied in my civics classes, a person in this country should have the right to support whomever he or she chooses without fear of extortion or backlash to their family or career. By you not supporting Bob or boycotting Bob, you're not only taking money out of his business, but you're also taking money out of his employees' paychecks. And if this continues, it's going to be a really sad state of affairs, as Steve was saying, that it shouldn't become a bipartisan issue. I happen to know that one can support a candidate without the fear of losing their job or business as a result, meaning that if I support a candidate and mention who I support to my employer, and my employer disagrees with my choice, he cannot fire me because of my choice, and that is against the law. Bob and I rarely agree on a candidate. You see, I'm a Democrat. I vote mostly Democrat at each election. But if there's a candidate for another party that I prefer, I will cast my ballot for that person. I am not bound to one party. I am open-minded like that. I voted for Obama in the last two elections. I have an Obama sticker on my car. In fact, I get harassed by random people I don't know. And I've been yelled at, had my car kicked, have been flipped the middle finger from other cars and more. But I don't hold back against those people. They are just expressing their feelings, and I move on. I am still proud of my vote and my sticker. In the last mayoral election, I went, I went back and forth on my vote. I looked at the issues, fracking, Longmont's growth, the mall, and more. I was leaning left on my vote, then something happened, the flood. After the flood, I kept waiting for Mayor Coombs to make a statement about the state of Longmont and how things were being done. I waited four days. It took him four days to make a statement. To me, that was three and a half days too long. I was not okay with that. I was angry. I knew this mayor was not one that was concerned about the worst thing to happen to Longmont. I wanted a mayor that would wear up his sleeves and get in there with the rest of us, so I voted for Brian on Election Day. The reason I banged this up is that the response to the flood reminded me of a similar situation in the late 70s in Chicago. Long story short, lizard, no red on cleanup, current mayor, election next November, hello, new mayor.
All right, that's it. You're turning this up. Thank you. Okay, that's the end of public invited to be heard. You know, there was two people, kinda got the list a little bit fast today. Okay. Come on, Strider, make it pass. Yeah, I know, I will.
My name is Strider Benston. Thank you very much. 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I thought this issue was over, and the fact that it was a candidate and not an office holder, I felt was relevant. And I thought it had been dismissed and over with at this point. And I appreciate the way this council has functioned. I think most of the time, most of the issues are not regarded in a partisan-taking, side-smashing manner of a very high proportion. And I'm very proud, even as Mr. Strong said, of the way this council functions almost all the time. And even when I disagree, I think normally the council does a very good job. So I just wanna get that on the record after what I just heard. I would just like to mention that 49 years ago today is the only time I've ever had a picture with Joan Baez that was published nationally.
... child, although a petulant child does not engage in political intimidation and bullying to silence opposing views. I'm surprised they haven't resorted to holding their breath. It is apparent that Polly is part of a well-organized political group with an agenda which serves their own interests and not the citizens of Longmont. It makes Polly's apology for being politically naive ring hollow. I believe her handlers decided this was the best way to spin it. To this day, I'm still thormixed by the behavior of Polly and her group, why they came into my restaurant except to bully and intimidate, not to apologize, and I have yet to receive an apology from Polly. It is apparent to me that the voters of Longmont were duped. I believe that the only way for you to put an end to this sad chapter is to resign, put the interests of the citizens of Longmont ahead of you and your group's agenda. Thank you.
Do you want to respond? Councilmember, question sent.
Yes, I would like to respond. I'm not part of some, I am not a professional political activist. I do not have a campaign advisor. I'm not part of a well-organized group. I don't have any handlers. I don't have a crew. I am vaguely aware of a conversation that you had several weeks ago. I do not know what happened or who said what because I wasn't there. This is a politi, this is a, this is supposed to be a, a public forum for a discussion of, by Longmont citizens of public policy. It's not supposed to be a forum for junior high-level gossip and the citizens and personal attack.
I'd just like to say that, I was very honest with myself behind this and I'm, I'm more than 9% positive that Polly had nothing to do with, you know, whoever came to practice that, so I blame some Jews behind it, but anyway. My question is, Stan Stone.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmember Steve Strong, 1615 Starion Circle. I've got two things to comment on. One, the item B that Wendell was talking about. Because of the flood, in the construction industry, we are experiencing increased costs in all our civil work, all of our groundwork, foundations, concrete, things like that. So our, our construction costs are going up about 20%. It's kind of an unintended consequence of a disaster. So when you go, if you go forward with it, in my opinion, that's a real expensive study, but you guys understand what you're doing and I leave that in your hands. But be very careful, please, to, in dealing with any fees that you could potentially come out of raising that. We're fighting, as you well know, the lack of housing and affordable housing. And any, any costs that go up just hinders those, hinders what we're trying to accomplish there. So just please be real sensitive when you get to that issue. The other one is the issue with Bob and Polly. And I guess, I hope this dies down, goes to sleep, but as I brought up to you before when it first happened, this is an example of what happens when politics starts to mix, bipartisan starts to mix its fingers in the city council. And I, and I know it happens, but we need to fight hard to make sure on both sides that there's not aisles, there's not partisanship in the city council. And I know your hearts are in the right place and a volunteer job for the most of you, and I know you're working hard and a lot of hours, but please, if you, if people want to start to bring that up, do your best to squelch it and, and keep this a nonpartisan position. Thank you very much. And I'm proud of what you're doing. You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Deborah Whitcomb.
Hi, I'm Deborah Whitcomb at 322 Vivian Street. I have a speech here that I was going to read word for word, but due to some of the previous speakers, I am changing it up a little bit. But I am here to address one of your councilpersons, Polly Christensen. And she just dropped her shoulder, so I'm sorry about that. And I am an employee at Auburn Banza Pizzeria. I have worked there for five and a half years. And I was there the night that you left the note, your not infamous note, informing Bob that you will no longer patronize this establishment due to endorsing a candidate that you did not want to succeed in the election. Upon writing that note, I felt it was out of line and I thought the person who wrote it didn't understand the political process. But when I found out it was you, I became angry. As far as I know, and what I studied in my civics classes, a person in this country should have the right to support whomever he or she chooses without fear of extortion or backlash to their family or career. By you not supporting Bob or boycotting Bob, you're not only taking money out of his business, but you're also taking money out of his employees' paychecks. And if this continues, it's going to be a really sad state of affairs, as Steve was saying, that it shouldn't become a bipartisan issue. I happen to know that one can support a candidate without the fear of losing their job or business as a result, meaning that if I support a candidate and mention who I support to my employer, and my employer disagrees with my choice, he cannot fire me because of my choice, and that is against the law. Bob and I rarely agree on a candidate. You see, I'm a Democrat. I vote mostly Democrat at each election, but if there's a candidate for another party that I prefer, I will cast my ballot for that person. I am not bound to one party. I am open-minded like that. I opened, I voted for Obama in the last two elections. I have an Obama sticker on my car. In fact, I get harassed by random people I don't know. And I've been yelled at, had my car kicked, have been flipped the middle finger from other cars and more. But I don't hold back against those people. They are just expressing their feelings and I move on. I am still proud of my vote and my sticker. In the last mayoral election, I went, I went back and forth on my vote. I looked at the issues, fracking, Longmont's growth, the mall, and more. I was leaning left on my vote, then something happened, the flood. After the flood, I kept waiting for Mayor Coombs to make a statement about the state of Longmont and how things were being done. I waited four days. It took him four days to make a statement. To me, that was three and a half days too long. I was not okay with that. I was angry. I knew this mayor was not one that was concerned about the worst thing to happen to Longmont. I wanted a mayor that would wear up his sleeves and get in there with the rest of us, so I voted for Brian on Election Day. The reason I banged this up is that the response to the flood reminded me of a similar situation in the late 70s in Chicago. Long story short, lizard, no road on cleanup, current mayor, election next November, hello new mayor.
All right, that's it. You're turning this up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of Public Invited to Be Heard. You know, there was two people, kind of got the list a little bit fast today. Okay. Come on, Strider, make it pass.
I know, I will. I, my name is Strider Benston. Thank you very much. 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I too thought this issue was over, and the fact that it was a candidate and not an office holder, I felt was relevant. And I thought it had been dismissed and over with at this point. And I appreciate the way this council has functioned. I think most of the time, most of the issues are not regarded in a partisan-taking, side-smashing manner, a very high proportion. And I'm very proud, even as Mr. Strong said, of the way this council functions almost all the time. And even when I disagree, I think normally the council does a very good job. So I just want to get that on the record after what I just heard. I would just like to mention that 49 years ago today is the only time I've ever had a picture with Joan Baez that was published nationally. But it happened to be the March on Montgomery. Martin Luther King spoke, and we and Jim Foreman and Cliff Sellers were sitting on the pavement in the rain, listening to Martin. And the whole plan of that march was to finally secure the right to vote in this council, and there are certainly forces who are trying to destroy that. Let us remember who we are as an American people and the fact that a democratic government is the only way we're going to hold our society together, and that requires people having the right to vote. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Come forward, Paul, and give your redeeming address, please.
Paul Tiger, 452 Dixon. Thank you so much. Some of you may have received, actually, all of you should have received my email from the other day, actually, this morning. There was a article in the Grand Junction Sentinel, which is the only one that covered the approval voting issue that I've been working on for two years, and I'd been before the council before. When Mayor Pro Tem Brian Bagley was, made pro tem, we went through, I think it was eight, nine ballots, I think it was, whatever. And that could have been done in one ballot, one approval voting ballot, by everybody voting for all of the candidates that they chose, and we would have gotten to that very quickly. And, well, less time usually means less money, but you guys get your stipend anyway. So the thing is, is that Longmont is a home-rule community and has had the ability to use approval voting for public votes, which is vote for all the candidates you want to. The one who has the most votes wins. This is for nonpartisan elections, and this is what we've been working for at the State Capitol. And I'd like once again for you guys to consider it for Longmont council votes, for Longmont elections. It actually costs less because we don't have to, the clerk doesn't have to employ a whole bunch of people to discern the intent of the voter. If, and oftentimes, we have a lot of people who are voting for multiple candidates because, like my mom, the last election that she voted in, in Boulder, there were 14 candidates for three seats. And she kept saying, but I, I've researched these people and I know, and my mom was sharp to the end, you guys know that. She really wanted to vote for multiple candidates, and she couldn't figure out why they couldn't just take it and figure out who had the most votes. So anyway, I'm coming back to continue to sell approval voting. I think that Longmont deserves that. You and I were in a race where there were, I think there were five candidates in that ward, and you might not actually be Mayor Pro Tem or even on this council, had we done that. But who knows? Anyway, I'm, I'm asking once again for you to give that a consideration and because as a home-rule community, we can have approval voting. We don't need a mandate from the state. And by the way, Polly is the one person who responds to my emails, and I appreciate that, and I think that she's an active council member. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anybody else who'd like to come speak at Public Invited to Be Heard at this time? Signal one, I'll close Public Invited to Be Heard.
Mayor Coombs, your first item of business is annual performance report to the community on 2013 CDBG and home programs and the public hearing to obtain comments, and Kathy Fedler will introduce this item.
This is Kathy Fedler, CDBG coordinator, and I'm here tonight, as Valerie indicated, to hold the annual performance report, public hearing, to the public on the 2013 Community Development Block grant and home programs, and to gain comments on search. So I did put at your desks the updated information on the CDBG, the home program, and the affordable housing programs. Some of the important highlights on the CDBG program were that we decreased the unspent funds by over $100,000 this year, so we are starting to spend down funds that had accumulated. We served over 10,055 persons and 14 businesses in 2013 with those funds. We leveraged $1.19 for every $1 in CDBG funds spent. Our admin costs were at a dollar ni, I'm sorry, 18.89%, and were allowed up to 20%, including, there was one planning activity that was included in there. About 10.5% was spent on public services and were allowed 15% for that. 99.2% of the funds spent benefited low and moderate income persons. We have a minimum percentage of 70% that has to be spent on low and moderate income persons. We completed and closed out nine different projects. The chart that you have in front of you on chart number two shows that of the funds that were budgeted in 2013, 35% were for housing projects, 20% were for neighborhood revitalization, 31% were for economic development projects. And by category on chart three, 48% of all the housing funds budgeted were spent, 50% of the neighborhood revitalization budget was spent, 52% of community investment, 79% of the economic development budget was spent in this year, which is really good because those funds were kind of lagging in getting spent, so that was a big accomplishment this year. And we spent about 96% of the admin dollars that we had budgeted. Overall, we had about a 63% expenditure rate for what was committed to what was spent. 28 total homes were rehabbed or made accessible or had emergency grants completed to them for economic development loans made to date with job creation. There were four of those. Seven full-time jobs and five part-time jobs are anticipated to be created over the life of the loan. None have been created to date, but those are fairly new loans, so that's not unexpected. In 2013, seven loans were made to lower-income business owners, so those folks are out and being productive in the community. Five business loans were made in the midtown area specifically, and two created two full-time jobs. We did use some of our funding for flood recovery in this, in 2013. Not coming up. Yeah, it's up at my chair. Yeah, sorry. And that was to provide assessments of mobile homes that were impacted by the flood so that they could access FEMA funding by having information about what the damage was to their mobile home. And then we also provided some funding to open up the Agape Warming Center while the flood event was happening so that folks who were homeless and had to move from the Greenway had a place to go and access specific services for them. On the home program, we did complete the Longmont Christian Housing St. Brine Manor tub shower conversion in 2013. The last phase of this project will be funded in 2014, and then every single unit there will have had their tubs converted to showers. We worked in 2013 on getting the in-between project bid and negotiated. We got quite high bids back the first time we bid that, so we did work to change things up a little bit and rebid and negotiate that contract. Construction will start this spring and will be completed by the end of the summer, and that particular building at 230 Coffin is going to look way different. It's going to be so nice. They're doing outside exterior, oh, good, siding and a lot of interior work, but new windows. It'll look like a totally new building. In the home program, we are also are working with the Longmont Housing Authority to reallocate the funds that we had allocated for the tenant-based rental assistance program to support maybe a construction project. What we're finding in this tight rental market is that people can't find places to rent, even when they have rent assistance provided. So there's no point in providing rent assistance when they have no place to rent. So if we could use those funds for construction projects that would actually provide units, that will help address the, the market need. We had about a 47% expenditure rate on the home program in 2013. For the Affordable Housing Fund, the Longmont Housing Authority project is showing as incomplete in 2013, but it was completed in 2013. They requested reimbursement early in 2014, so that one's done, and it'll show as complete in the next cycle. No fee offsets were provided this year. Habitat for Humanity and the Longmont Housing Authority are the two main developers that usually qualify for those. We have not had any private developers seek funding because you do have to support affordable units. That might be changing in the future. But Habitat had either their units already under construction, so we already provided fee waivers for the units that they actually completed, or they haven't started on new units yet. So 2014, we'll see some additional fee offsets provided from the Affordable Housing Fund. We did have a 72% expenditure rate for the Affordable Housing Fund and leveraged about $5.60 for every $1 of Affordable Housing Funds spent. Our five-year consolidated plan goals are, there's six of them, and they're very broad. The first one's renter housing. The second one is homeowner housing. The third is homebuyer, new homebuyer to support that. Homeless assistance is the fourth goal. Community investments, the fifth goal, and the sixth goal is around economic development. Everything that we fund fits into one of those goals, as well as the city's Human Service Agency funding and some of the general fund that council sets aside for homeless activities in particular, and poverty reduction also help us meet the goals of the consolidated plan. I, we're, 2013 was the fourth year of the five-year consolidated plan, and we are over 100% in goal achievement in every area except for the homebuyer goal. And we are not seeing the down payment assistance requests that we normally do. The inclusionary zoning program's no longer kicking units out, so that is mainly why we're not seeing things in the home, homebuyer area. We continue to work to support the down payment assistance program and making that information available, and so that's one we will be concentrating on in the future. So the slides are up. I don't know if you want me to go through them or not at this point. This one does show the, the grant amount we received. We received about $51,500, just under that, in program income in 2013. We had about $640,000 that was unspent at the end of 2012. We have committed $1,152,000. There's about $110,000 that's unprogrammed at this point. That is a new figure for 2013, and I was kind of surprised by that, so I'm going to have to do some reconciling with U.S. Treasury and see if in fact there's $110,000 sitting in our letter of credit. We want to get that reallocated in, in programs. So I'll be working on that in the next couple of months. We spent $723,000, and again, like I said, at the end of 2013, we had about $540,000 unspent. So that, the 643 to the 540 is where we, we spent an additional $100,000, so we lowered that. The other charts are the ones that you have in front of you, so I won't go through those. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or if you want to open the public hearing.
Any questions from council before I open this up, public hearing? Councilmember Bagley?
My only question is, what's the difference between the, where is that, previous year's unexpended funds and funds unspent at 2013 year-end? Just curious.
It's the same. So at the end of 2012, this was the amount that we had unspent. Is the previous year's unexpended funds, the red column? And then the one at the end, that's just, so we did spend more than our grant amount this year. That's why that reduced that a little bit for 2013.
Two different years. Got it, got it. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll open this up to public hearing. Is anybody from public who'd like to speak on this item at this time? Signal one, I'll close the public hearing. So I guess we need to get someone to make a motion. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we accept and authorize the submission of this report.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Bagley. Let's vote. Half passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the consent agenda. Item 9A is Resolution 201433, Resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for youth core program services in 2014. Item 9B is Resolution 201434, approving the master intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Colorado Department of Transportation for reimbursement of emergency roadway repairs. Item 9C is reappoint Lori Walker and appoint Emily Scortino and Tim Rayco to the Affordable Housing Technical Review Group. Staff does not have a need to pull any of these items.
Okay. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Half passes seven to zero.
Your next item is general business. That would be the storm drainage flood improvements, potential ballot question for the issuance of storm drainage revenue bonds. Dale Radamaker will start this off.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Dale Radamaker, drive for Public Force and Natural Resources, and as Barb gets the slideshow going. We're here this evening to present to council information regarding a potential storm bond in the storm drainage utility and to have some discussion, get direction from council on whether or not to proceed on that. And so the presentation tonight, we're going to, we're going to look back a little bit on what we did in 2008, just to remind the public and remind the council that back in 2007, the city also issued storm drainage bonds and, and review the projects that we completed as a result of that effort. We're going to look real quickly, not spend, not go a long time, on the 2013 flood. Then we're going to move ahead and talk a little bit about the plan to change up the St. Brine in order to be able to convey 100-year storm flow down the St. Brine Channel. And then we're going to discuss with council and get your direction regarding strategies and options going forward. And so these are a couple of projects that we did in 2008, between 2008 and now. On the, on the right is the, excuse me, on the left is the Spring Gulch Number Two project. So what we did is we bought land out around Union Reservoir in order to protect it, sort of in perpetuity, and let it be inundated in, in future floods along Spring Gulch Number Two. And then we're also, as anybody that drives east on 119 knows, we are doing a large project out just east of Walmart, and that's the project in the photograph that's in the center, and it's, it's a large box culvert that's being put underneath State Highway 119. It'll serve a couple of purposes. It'll serve as a pedestrian passageway from Sandstone Park north along the future Spring Gulch Trail up into the east side of Longmont, up to Stephen Day Park and even further north. It'll also convey the 100-year storm across State Highway 119, and that was one of the key projects that we talked to voters about back in 2007, and that it was an important transportation link going east of the city. And then on the, on the right is a tarryo photograph of the detention facility that was built north of the city that will detain about 400 acre feet of water. And that, together with work that we intend to do on Terry Lake Reservoir, will provide protection to North Longmont from future flooding potential out of the Terry Lake Drainage Basin. And so that, that bond issue also included two additional major projects. The one on the left is Lytton's Vult, and the one on the right is Left Hand Creek. Now, these Now, these two projects got sort of challenged and tested in September of 2013 with the flood. So this is a, you know, pre-flood photograph. It's a nice little stream, everything looks good. This is during the flood. And so on the left, you can see Lykan's Gulch. And what's important to look at here is that on the top of the photograph, all the water is brown. And that's all floodwater coming down the St. Brain, heading from west to east. And as it hit the channel, as it hit Lykan's Gulch, Lykan's Gulch redirected it, if you will, back towards the St. Brain and protected those areas downstream and to the, to the south and to the west, excuse me, to the east of Lykan's Gulch. And that, you can see pretty clearly that the reservoirs that are just downstream stayed clear. And so, you know, although it wasn't technically built to assist in the St. Brain flood, it did. I mean, it was really built to carry the flood down Lykan's Gulch. But as you can see here, it serves multiple purposes like, like most of these projects. So in addition, it's a, it's an awesome trail corridor, you know, the trail corridor that folks can use coming from southwest Longmont. And then on the right, that's Left Hand Creek, coming across at the South Pratt Bridge and right next to Canamota Park. And again, largely it's in the channel, also in Missouri Avenue, but it is, it is not flooding all the streets and neighborhoods down in Southmore Park. We did have about ten homes that were, that got flooded, but compare that with what we would have had, which would have been hundreds of homes flooded in Southmore Park. And so, the point we're making is that flood projects do come in handy when you have a flood. None of us knew we were going to have a flood in 2013, but, but we did. So now what we want to talk a little bit about is the St. Brain. You know, since the city was built and founded back in the eighteen-seventies, Longmont has never really had a St. Brain that was able to carry the hundred-year flood. And it has flooded. You know, 2013 wasn't the first time the St. Brain flooded through Longmont. Probably the last really bad one was back in the eighteen-nineties. Granted, it wasn't a big city down there, but the little town of Burlington had to pick itself up and really roll itself up the street and reestablish up near Third Avenue. So, you know, this is looking to the west of Longmont, looking back towards Longmont. And again, you can see the width of the St. Brain. It's, it's anywhere from a half to a mile wide coming at us. Here we are coming across Airport Road, and the water's swirling coming in on Twin Peak Circle. Just a phenomenal, a phenomenal amount of water. The thing I do want to point out here, because it's, I think it's going to be in tomorrow's paper, the, you can see the medians down Airport Road. I can't really show you, but, actually, no, I can't. Anyway, the median there is the, the green area going down at the center of the road there. And you can see that it's, even at this sort of high, high part of the flood, you can still see the median. And so our strategy is we're going to fill in that gap on Twin Peak Circle, we're going to fill in the gap along the railroad, and we're going to fill in the gap further south. And that work is underway to get those barriers placed out there. So here, here's the flood coming across out of the Greens neighborhood, now the Champion Greens across the Twin Peaks Gulf course, heading towards the Valley subdivision. All of these are photographs taken on the morning of September 12th. This was that north channel of St. Brain that we keep focusing on and talking about, how we need to work in concert in partnership with the county to make sure that the river sort of behaves itself west of the city. And I'm going to show you a little bit about how that works as part of this presentation as well. Here we are at the Parks Facility at Sunset Street, and at this point, the river is out of its channel. It's crossed over Hoover Road, both north and south of the bridge, in addition, coming under the bridge. But here you can see it's inundating the Parks Facility, coming down along the railroad, crossing over Sunset Street into Isaac Walton Pond area. Here's the Longmont Business Park, we're looking at Home Budget Center. You know, it was actually sitting high enough. Home Budget was built probably in the last ten or fifteen years, and that, that particular building was raised high enough in the floodplain to not get wet. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case for all of our businesses and friends and neighbors in that particular area. Here we are looking at the Royal Mobile Home Park. And council, you're aware of that. That was a, a project that you directed us to move ahead on, so we have since acquired the park. We are continuing to work with about between five and ten residents that are continuing to live there while they are working hard to get relocated, and we are working with them to get that relocation done. You know, you can compare that with, with some of the challenges that Millikan and Evans are going through right now. And I don't know if you're following that or if you care about that, but different communities are facing very different challenges on how they're, how they're dealing with it. And, you know, Longmont is different than Evans and Millikan, and we probably have different resources and different abilities, but I think the way you have directed us to proceed on this has, has worked out well, and I think it will prove to be a smart move going down the road.
Also on that issue, I'd like to point out that as it relates to the Royal Mobile Home Park, we've actually had folks from other organizations come and talk to the staff in, in community services and neighborhood services about the process we're going through, how we're working with individuals, because they want to mimic it in, in other locations. So, and there's really some great work being done in that area.
I agree. I think it's, it's gone very well. So here we are at Main Street. Here again, the river upwards of a mile wide. This is just north of First Avenue, looking south. Again, you can see the inundation of the, of the area. Looking down First Avenue, First Avenue is sort of the boundary. It didn't go much further north of First Avenue, but from there down to almost Can Pratt Boulevard had flood damage of one nature or another. I think the thing to point out as well is, you know, USGS is, is working on what those final numbers were and what flood level did we experience in Longmont. Let me just go through some of the numbers quickly. So, the St. Brain Channel, pre-flood, on September 11th, was able to carry about five thousand CFS, okay? In its, in its pre-flood stage or state. A one-hundred-year flood level is about ten thousand CFS, or about double what the channel could carry at that time. So even at that time, a hundred-year storm, about half of the flow would have spread out and gone around and found its, its different ways. What we are learning is that the, the flow rates coming through the city are upwards of twenty thousand CFS and possibly more, okay? Twenty thousand CFS is ever very close to the five-hundred-year flood level. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. The good thing is we survived a five-hundred-year flood. The bad thing is we had a five-hundred-year flood, and I think a lot of people got hurt, and a lot of people got their property damaged. Nobody lost their life, but we had substantial hardship and damage in our community. So the St. Brain Creek also found its way to our wastewater plant. It, it could not withstand those flows either, and it ultimately had to be abandoned. And so I think that's, Mother Nature has shown us, you know, what can happen. It's, it's in some ways a little bit ironic, but we were talking with the council, I think not, not all of you were on council at the time, but we had just completed the Stormwater Master Plan, and we were talking with the council about the need to start looking at the St. Brain, and that that is our next big challenge and what we need to do, and that we may even need upwards of twenty million dollars to start working on it. And so, after the flood, last October, we came and gave you a presentation with regards to the Storm Drainage Utility and the challenges in front of it. Challenges, everything from just getting the match to be able to match the FEMA grant money for the city's twelve-and-a-half percent, not to mention the dollars to be able to make any sort of headway or improvements on the St. Brain. At council, and this was the pro forma that we showed you back in October of 2013, and what this showed was that if we increased the rates from seven dollars and seventy-seven cents per month per residential unit up to thirteen dollars and five cents, that that would be able to fund upwards of twenty million dollars of bond debt issuance. And what we talked with you about were two alternatives that night. We also talked with you about the potential of a forty million dollar of bond scenario that would take the rates as high as over seventeen dollars a household per month. What staff recommended and what council agreed with at that time you directed us to do was just go for the twenty, and for a lot of reasons. I think first and foremost is that let's get twenty million and see what we can get done with that, and let's see how we can match and grow that twenty million dollars with additional federal funds. And let's also trust the Longmont public enough that if we make good work and if we do what we need to do, that they will actually trust us if we need to actually come back, if we're not successful at securing all the federal dollars that we want to get. That was the direction you gave us, and that's where we are now. So the rates did increase in, in January of 2014, and they're currently at that thirteen dollar and five cent level. And so, I want to talk with you a little bit about, and if there's questions at any time, just let me know, but, so the preliminary plan to carry the hundred-year storm down the St. Brain, that is really sort of the essence of what we're looking at. And there are about five reaches. We've done some conceptual designs along the St. Brain, all the way from Martin Street on the east to Lykan's Gulch, which is just west of Hoover Road in the Golden Ponds Park area on the west. And we've broken that down into five different reaches for the purposes of budgeting and cost estimating. You know, I will caution, these cost estimates are fairly, fairly, quite preliminary. We're working very fast on these things. But I, but I feel pretty good that the numbers I'm going to talk with you about are probably numbers that we will not exceed, and if we are good at what we're trying to do, we might even come in at a little bit lower. Before I get into the costs, though, I want to talk a little bit about the river west of the city, so that folks at home can, can sort of see the work that Boulder County has done, and the work that the city of Longmont has done with regards to trying to protect those neighborhoods west of the city. And then I also want to talk a little bit about the current capacity of the St. Brain for spring runoff down through our community as well. And so what I'm going to have Barb pull up here and show the different layers on is, this is the St. Brain west of Longmont. Airport Road is, is in about the center of this, this aerial map. You can see the Longmont, if you can move your cursor, Barb, where Airport Road is, and then the Longmont Airport, you can sort of see right next to the, to Airport Road. And so what we have had is CH2M Hill. We have had them do modeling of the, of the St. Brain in its current configuration. The area has had new topographic survey done in its post-flood condition. And so what we asked them to do was to model the river at different flow rates so that we can see what the impact was. What I'm going to show you here, this is what's called on the improved drawing, meaning post-repair of the breaches west of the city. And the county has just announced today that they have finished the repairs of all three of the breaches, which is great news. I, I went out and drove by them on Saturday, and I confirmed that I think the county's done a, a good job, and our contractor's done a good job. And the major breach was the one that was breached at the very top corner of this, of this photograph where the white area is. That was the major breach that caused the river to find a channel north of the St. Brain and into those neighborhoods. So that breach has now been repaired. And so this, this first flow rate, I think, is for year 2011, which was another high snowpack year. And that, that is what's got some folks very concerned. It's got, it's got my attention. I think it's got everybody's attention. Whenever you have that much snow sitting in the mountains west of you, you have the potential to have a pretty heavy runoff. But 2011 also had a very high snowpack. It didn't, however, have the highest runoff in the last ten years. So, going forward, I think this is now the, the ten-year flow rate, and then the next one, I think, is nineteen ninety-five flow rate, which was the highest flow rate that we've seen in about the last twenty-five to thirty years. And that flow rate at Lyons was about nineteen hundred CFS. We are working towards and planning towards twenty-five hundred CFS. That is the flow rate that we are trying to protect against in this year's spring runoff, which is greater than the flow rate that we have seen in the last thirty years, which isn't to say we couldn't have it, but it's, I'm trying to sort of give the, the sense that we're not just planning for a routine runoff. We know we have the potential for something to be higher. And so as we go forward, this is now the fifty-year flow rate, which is far greater than twenty-five hundred CFS. And you can see, even in this drawing, that the river essentially stays in its channel west of Airport Road. It does inundate some low-lying pasture land and farmland west of the city, but it does not break out of its main channel and start heading into those neighborhoods west of the city. And then this last one, even when we turn on a one-hundred-year flood event, so this is around ten thousand CFS coming down the river west of the city. With that breach repaired, it shows that the neighborhoods do not get inundated. But here's the big catch. A, the breach has got to hold. The repair of the breach has got to hold, right? That's what's standing between those neighborhoods and a potential for a repeat offense, if you will. And so what we are working in concert with the county on are several other layers of defense. The first one being immediately downstream of that breach is where we breached the river in, in partnership with the county across Hygiene Road. We would reopen that breach in the event that, that the repair at the, at breach number seven fails, okay? If that doesn't work, we are also then working with property owners between Seventy-Fifth and Airport Road to lay out a drainage channel to, again, redirect the river south back towards its main channel, to redirect it towards the bridge at Airport Road. And then lastly, the city and our contractors are working today to place the concrete barriers on, on Airport Road. And, and that's sort of the last and, uh, fourth line of defense, if you will, against that flood reoccurring. I can't say with one-hundred percent guaranteed it won't happen, but I do feel pretty confident. We are going to go back and meet with all those neighborhoods again, and luckily, we're going to be able to go back and tell them some good news so that we, we get out of there alive. But I, I do feel pretty good about it. Things can change. And so what can change to make this a different scenario? Well, the, the worst thing that happens is temperatures rise very, very rapidly. They, it stays cold for a long time. We get a lot of late snow. We get a lot of snow in April. We even get snow early in May, and then it just turns around and goes up to ninety degrees, eighty, ninety degrees. And then you add on top of that a rain event. That's what can change the characteristics of the spring runoff. And it takes all of that phenomena coming together. That can happen. I, I would think, short of another catastrophic event, though, we would likely not have a hundred-year flood event, even in 2014 snowpack. Can't predict the future, but, and I'm not a meteorologist either, but... So Barb, can you show us now the St. Brain coming through the city at twenty-five hundred CFS? And so this is, again, CH2M Hill has modeled the river in its current condition. This modeling work starts at about Hoover Road and works its way down to Martin Street. And, and we'll just sort of step through these slides, but what I want to show here is that the river is contained with its, within its channel at twenty-five hundred CFS, even through this next stretch, which is sort of a critical reach between Sunset and Boston Avenue near the Isaac Walton Pond, which is where it, it breached into the pond, and then the pond overflowed into the neighborhood and into the business park just to the east of them. This shows that twenty-five hundred CFS is able to make it through there. We are doing additional work, though, in that length of the channel in partnership with the property owners between Sunset and Boston to even improve this condition beyond that. And so I think we're going to be able to carry in excess of twenty-five hundred CFS, possibly upwards of three thousand or a little bit more through that stretch as well. And then as you make your way down through the, through the city, here we are at Pratt and the Railroad. Again, it's staying within its channel. It's sort of behaving itself at that flow rate, not causing us too much problem. And it does that all the way out to and through Martin Street. And so what we are working on is granular gravel debris removal at some key locations. One is at the Airport Road Bridge, upstream and downstream of that bridge, because we are trying to funnel a lot of water to that bridge. Last thing we want to do is send water there and not be able to get under the bridge. And so that work is about to get under the way. We're, we're working very well with the county and the Zouek family, which has been a pleasure to work with. They are wonderful people that help us when we need help, and I get emotional talking about them because they are good folks. And then we're also going to be removing debris in that stretch from the railroad down to Pratt, where it comes around Boston Court in that same area, and then also just downstream of where Dry Creek comes into the St. Brain behind Harvest Junction. Those are some key locations where we need to get the channel cleared so that it will pass flows. So that's the work that the public's going to need to understand is going on just in, in advance of spring runoff and to let, sort of get, get folks updated on that. And so now I'm going to show you a little bit about, so what's the plan to get the St. Brain to be able to carry a hundred-year flood, which is really the focus of tonight's presentation. And so I'm going to step through some of these pretty quickly, starting at just west of Hoover Road. And what we're showing here is very conceptual, and we have not talked with every individual property owner. So I want, if property owners are watching, we are going to be talking with you, but this is very conceptual. We want to work with you. We want, we want to get a design that works very closely with your needs to protect your property and to protect... your property and to protect your neighbor's property. But this is to give an indication of the design work that CH2 has already done up and down the stream, and the cost estimate that has come along with that, that I'm going to show you next. And so Barb, just step through some of those, and I'll highlight a few of the sections. And so this is coming down just outside of Rogers Grove, coming up to Sunset Street. And then we, or no, that's Hover Road. I'm sorry, we're at Hover Road. Now we're at Rogers Grove. The other thing I want to say as we go through this, we also understand that this is a very sensitive riparian area for our community. And we've got to be able to do this work with as much awareness and care that we can, while still achieving the purpose of conveying the 100-year flood. So it is, it is going to be, it's going to take a lot of conversations and a lot of work and a lot of good design work to get the most creative channel that we can through here, that respects that as best as we can, as well as provides additional opportunities for the community to enjoy it, as we rebuild the greenway and rebuild public spaces there. So as we continue downstream, I think that's Sunset Street. Now we're at Sunset, coming by Isaac Walton. And the channel width, you'll notice it changes. At some points, it's as wide as 300 feet wide at the top, and at other areas, we're able to narrow it down to about 200 feet. So there's some variance. The other thing we intend to do, as we continue with the design work, is there may be sections that are actually more of a wall section, more similar to what you might see along Cherry Creek in the Denver area. And the reason we would do that is if we are in a very tight area, where we're trying to work with local property owners to protect their buildings and not have to take their building. I think it also gives different character. As you go up and down the greenway, it's sort of a different feel with different stretches. And so this, this work has been done all the way down to Martin Street on the east. And we have got some very preliminary cost estimates that I will maybe shock you with, but show you, so that you can sort of see what we're up against. We're going to continue to refine this, but it's going to be a very heavily community-engaged project that's also going to tie in...
Councilmember Levinson, you have a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, Dan. As, I just want to make sure that I'm looking at the drawings, so I'm interpreting correctly. When I'm looking at the drawings, it appears that sometimes when the river is wider, it's wired, wider and shallower. And then when you're talking about the concept of having it maybe a walled, a retaining wall, does that mean, I'm looking at, perhaps it's deeper then? So when it's narrow, it's deeper, the amount of water, volume of water would remain the same flowing through?
Correct.
Is that, is that what the point of the cross-sections are?
Yes. And so, so there's sort of multiple variables. There's X, Y, and Z coordinates. And so it also, you've got to look at the grade. And so it's not just the width or the depth, but also the grade, right? And so those are all of the considerations. And we actually do have some grade to play with, if you will, that can also create some interesting rapids or areas where there's water that's taking a different character as it goes through. And so, yeah, that all comes into play. But the bottom line is, it's got to carry in the neighborhood of 10,000 CFS, right? No matter what the cross-section looks like.
I have a question about the railroad bridge. What if the railroad doesn't want to do it, and we have no other funding? What would happen if we do all of our part, but the railroad bridge just stays there? How much of a problem is that for us?
That would be a problem.
So they could create a problem for us if they don't rebuild that bridge?
Yeah, and I'm hopeful not to get there, but Mayor Combs, you bring up a good point. I think Burlington Northern and both RTD, we hope to work with both of those entities. You know, as everybody knows, RTD intends to bring fast tracks into Longmont. And we want to work with probably both agencies, both the private company as well as RTD, to look at a way to get this bridge replaced sooner than later, much sooner than later. And because the bridge will not pass the 100-year storm. And so not only will it back up the water into those areas to the west of the railroad, but it'll damage the railroad. It'll breach the railroad. The railroad was breached in September. And so I think there is an economic benefit for Burlington Northern to not have their rail disrupted as a result of a future flood. That's my story. And so we will try to work with them. We may even come forward with some sort of a partnership for the city to assist them, if need be, to get it done. We need, we can't sort of let that be the barrier.
Yeah, that could be the weak link to the whole chain.
That sorts everything we're trying to get done, right? So let's go ahead and go back to some of the costs now. Now we get to the, now we get to the fun stuff. So estimates. Preliminary estimates range from 65 to 80. And we have been saying on our website, could be as high as 90 million, okay? You know, some of that additional dollars may have to go west of the city. I think the solutions west of the city could be relatively inexpensive, from what we're seeing right now. But we don't want to forget that in this whole, in this whole process. So the 65 to 80 million really comes down to the different configurations, whether we do walls or no walls, and, you know, just layback channels, buy more property, less property. And so there's a ton of variables in here, that you can't narrow down that gap until you get to a final design, that the community and everybody supports and says, yeah, this is the one we want to go build. We think it's in that range, though. We think we're anywhere from 65 to 80 million, okay? So how do we pay for it? Well, this first slide in blue shows the funds that we think we either have more control over, or already have in hand. So the first one are the things that are already funded, which are the Main Street Bridge, the South Pratt Parkway, and the Sunset Bridge. And remember, the Sunset Bridge is coming from funds from the Federal Highway Authority. The next line is the proposed Storm Drainage Bond that we want to get council's direction on this evening. The next one is the Street Fund, and the Street Fund is coming into play to do several things, mainly the transportation structures. And those transportation structures are things like potentially the Hover Street Bridge will have to be replaced, which is an expensive bridge. The Boston Avenue Bridge will have to be replaced. And if we have to partner with the railroad, it could come into play there. And we also have been using the Street Fund to assist in trail construction through the city. And so some of the pedestrian bridges that have to be replaced, say as a road bridge is done, we'd probably do that as well out of that Street Fund funding.
And you will be seeing the Street Fund coming to you from the Transportation Advisory Board. This number of 7 million is predicated that it's approved by the voters this fall. And so if it's not approved, then there's a gap that we're seeing in that 7 million.
Stay tuned. If we don't get that, this 7 goes to 0, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be available to come into play. Next one, Dallas Open Drainage and Water Fund, and that's really for that area east of Main Street, near the Dickens Park, and also where the Water Fund has got a water diversion to take water up into Union Reservoir. And that's all tied to getting the mashing dollars for FEMA to do an alternate project in that stretch of the river. Conservation Trust Fund will also come into play in that stretch, because it was a fund that was going to be leveraged to do the Dickens Park. Now, the next line, the FEMA Alternative Projects, there is a little bit of, not a little bit, quite a bit of uncertainty with regards to the exactness of this number, because that has to go through the entire FEMA process. But what we mean by an alternate project is that, for instance, east of Main Street in the Dickens Park area, we don't intend to exactly build the river back and rebuild the ponds exactly back the way they were. We think, but we're going to show what the cost of that to do would be, because FEMA will pay to rebuild those ponds. But in order to do that, we have to dig out the channel, we have to do just a ton of work. So we're going to identify that project, and then we're going to do what's called an alternative project, that accomplishes the same thing from a flood perspective, and even from an environmental perspective, to convey the flood through there. And that's going to be leaving the river largely in the channel that it's in, and rebuilding the ponds in a little different configuration. We think that's going to be less expensive than what the overall project, in that we would then take some of these excess funds and apply them to the other areas of the St. Rain. That's some of the creativeness that you can get, working with the alternative fund dollars through FEMA. We also have the opportunity to do that on the Sandstone Ranch area, where, again, the river is out of its channel, and there were a series of ponds out there. So we are going to, again, estimate what it would cost to rebuild all that infrastructure to exactly the way it was pre-flood.
The big difference in the alternate, alternate project method is that you essentially negotiate with FEMA what the cost of rebuilding that specific location amounts to. For them, under the normal worksheet process, if you had cost overruns, you could go back and get more money. In this process, you don't have the ability. You get a fixed amount, and that's what you're working with. Based on the engineering that we're seeing, you then can divert those funds to FEMA-qualified projects. Mitigation being one of those projects, which is, which is new, because you don't necessarily get mitigation dollars through worksheet dollars, but you can reappropriate those dollars for mitigation using the alternate method. There's a process we have to go through where you adjust the worksheet, but that's essentially how that program works.
Suffice it to say, that's the one that's going to take some additional work. So those all add up to about $47.6 million, leaving a funding gap ranging from 17.4 to 32.4 million dollars. So now how do we fill that gap? So on the next slide, this is where we have made application to a variety of federal funding sources. The first one is the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds, and this is just for the initial issuance that they came out with of about 60-some million dollars. You recall, they came out with about 199 million more. And so we're still showing just that 6 million for the purposes of tonight's discussion. But that is a source that we are trying to go after. There are constraints with those dollars as well. And, you know, one of the biggest constraints on the CDPG dollars is that you have 24 months. The clock starts ticking. From the day that they approve the money, you have 24 months to spend it. If anybody knows, building a major drainage project and major bridges and those kinds, it's just, it's going to be tough. And so we're going to really have to have shovel-ready projects ready to go to really leverage and utilize the CDPG money. We think we can do it in some areas, and we're going to go after those, but that is probably one of the most challenging aspects of it, from my geeky engineering perspective.
So in terms of the DR dollars, one of the things that we're having a conversation, we actually had the conversation today, is really looking at the second allocation in the 199 million, in terms of how we go forward with that. One of the things that we're hearing is, is there may be, there's a potential that HUD may be talking about looking at more of a streamlined allocation to cities, entitlement cities via the state. It would still go to the state, but a potential for some type of avenue that we can look at for a direct allocation from the state, and we're examining that in the process. And the reason that we're really looking at it, when we look at the DR dollars, it has to do with how much money we can get, but it also has to do with the speed that we can work, if it was given directly to us versus going through another process. And so we're actually going to begin having conversations on those DR dollars, again, hoping to leverage funds on top of the 6 million that we have here. And ultimately, that offsets the cost. But I wanted to let you know that that's another conversation that we have going on.
So the next one on the list here is from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And again, we've applied for upwards of 9.5 million. I'd love to come back and say we got the full 9.5 million. These are national programs. I think we've got a really good case. We actually got a call from their Omaha office, sort of soliciting us to put an application in. And I think that came through Cory Gardner's office that put the call into us and said, heck, yeah, we're going to get on the phone with him. So we got our application in that next day, and we'll see. We'll see how much we get through that one. And then the last one on here is the big one. Again, we've asked FEMA for another 37 million dollars. And I think if we get a fraction of that, we should be happy. You know, we are getting another 3 million as part of the project that we're just getting underway with on the Main Street Bridge. We got 3 million on Lefton Creek, you know, another 3 million on Main Street. So I don't want to be too tough on them. But whether we'll get 37 million or not, I probably wouldn't hold my breath for that one. I would think we're going to get something, but probably not this full amount. Obviously, if we got everything, we're in great shape. You know, we can do this and more. But bottom line is, I think we've got a fairly good plan in place, that if our community comes forward... Actually, Barb, take me to that next slide. So if we move ahead with a valid issue, and our community is able to come forward in these application processes, when we're talking with our federal partners, that we stand ready with local dollars to match up with your federal dollars, it makes our application much, much stronger, because it shows, A, there's local support, and not only just support, there's local dollars coming into play. And so what we are, bottom line is here tonight, is to talk with you and get direction, whether or not, to move forward, to set a bond election. We are looking at currently, working with Valerie, and she's been great to work with, because it's been a bit challenging coordinating with the county. We want to hold it on June 24th, which is the primary election. It'll be a mail ballot, I believe. And the county is working with us to run that as a coordinated election. And so, two questions for you, and then I'll shut up. One is, do you want us to move forward with 20 million or some other amount? Okay? Your current rate structure will support 20 million without having to raise rates further. The second question is, do we go for June 24th? If we go June 24th, we believe we would then be in a position to be able to start issuing those bonds yet in 2014. I think, unless Jim says no.
I'd like to ask a question. Let's say hypothetically, we go ahead and we do the 20 million dollar, and it passes the bond, but then we find out that we were really, really lucky, we got all the grants, we got a bunch more DR money, and we really didn't even need to exercise those bonds. That's...
So the question, that's a great question, Mayor Combs. Here's the nuance or the dilemma there. We also want to get underway pretty aggressively with design, to start moving these forward, because we can only qualify for some of these federal dollars if we have these projects ready to go. And so we got to get going on design. The federal process is to know when we're going to get it. You know, we can hold off on issuing the bonds, right, as long as we can, before we go out to market and say, you know what, we're not waiting any longer. Either we've been told no, or we've been told wait three years, or we've been told, you know, come back and talk to us in, you know, 2020. So those are probably all the nuances, I could say, before we would recommend issuing.
When he talks about design, the number that we're talking about in terms of cost of design is in the neighborhood of 8 million dollars.
Okay. Just more than our annual revenue in the storm drainage. So, but absolutely, we would look, I would agree with you. I mean, my gosh, why would we, why would we go do that if we didn't need to?
But I think that it does make sense to be proactive and have all the dominos in place, and be ready to act and pull the trigger.
Being controlled.
So I guess I would support the 20 million dollar. And the early timing of the election is how I'm getting... Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. Would we also be in a position, if we got the okay from our voters for the 20 million, would FEMA then say, well, you know, maybe they're going to be flushing cash, and their citizens will support, you know, this, and they may have other needs that they'll see that other communities, perhaps like Evans, I know, cannot raise that kind of money? And they, it may just, would we ever harm ourselves in the big picture of having this cash ready to go?
So Mayor Combs and Councilmember Levinson, I think there's a low chance that that could happen. There's always a chance that could happen. From what I've seen in the application process, though, they are typically looking for the local match, the local dollars that are coming forward. Right now, we have virtually nothing that we can for sure say we're bringing to the table. And so I think, even with the 20 million, we're also still showing a huge funding gap. I would say if we, if 20 million solved it, then yeah, then FEMA would say, hey, great job, Longmont, knock yourself out. It doesn't. We still have upwards of 32 million that is not funded. And this is not also the type of project that we can just build one piece of it and solve the problem. We need to build at least a Sunset Street, if not even a little further, to give protection to the business park.
And then I've got a couple, a follow-up question to that. And then, I've got a couple, a follow-up question to that. Would it also protect us in the case that the Inspector General comes from five years from now and says, "You know, we don't think you checked the right box on that third page of four hundred additional pages we asked you to fill out." And by the way, then, you know, we've heard this from other communities, so does it also give us a little bit of fudge room that if they're, if somehow they claw money back, that we do have the resources to back up our bills?
We would be in a better position to be able to give money back that we have as opposed to.
Money we don't have.
So, yes, but I also think our accounting and our purchasing folks are doing an awesome job and I'm equally confident that's not going to happen.
So, I will say in that case, I agree with Dale that I'm very confident in the work they're doing. I actually had a conversation with Molly today in the process they're going through in submitting the documentation to the state, and literally, we are going through an OIG scenario now to get the repayment. And so, I think the information they're providing is great. Actually, we had a conversation today, you know, one of the things that we're doing on this is looking at staffing levels, just so to make sure that we can keep up with the pace, and that's something we're looking at to continue that work and make sure that we're on point. But based on what I've seen in the work that Molly, Dan, and the finance group, they're on point and they're providing great information. That's not to say that in five years from now, we're not going to be in an argument with OIG on an issue, but I think that the information they're putting together is solid, and we're in a good position.
And just the, I understand the urgency of going to the ballot on this. However, June twenty-fourth primary, not so many people vote in a primary, and I just would like to see strong numbers of community support through people going to the polls to specifically vote for the bonds. I know it's a lot easier in a fall election, however, I don't want, I don't like that the voters wouldn't have the confidence, and we wouldn't have the confidence perhaps, that, you know, whatever our numbers were, voters in the highest last couple of elections, those high numbers we might have had. I would hate for a thousand people to vote on this issue, and, you know, eight hundred vote yes and two hundred vote no, and basically.
Although, we'd like that better than eight hundred no in an argument.
Yeah, yeah, well, that would be, you would be, you would be like not coming into work the next week perhaps. You'd have to take a big vacation. But I, that's the only thing that gives me pause about that date, and I know once we take the action to put it on the ballot and make the ballot language officially as a city, we cannot advocate for it. All of us could start knocking on doors to inform people, but I really think that it's so many projects and so much dirt is going to be turned over. Part of the ballot issue is the communication with the voters on the projects. That's what the city has been so successful with. In the two thousand and eight bond issue, every time we go to the voters for renewal of the street stacks, those are the, I mean, it's almost the best way of communicating when people are asked to make a, an affirmative decision to help us do this work.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we were talking about matching, city matches at Dr. Cog last week, and how important it is and vital it is for cities to have some sort of match when it comes to federal funds, and so I see this bond election as vital. While I do echo some concerns about the prime, you know, having this on a primary election, is there anything that would, I don't want to put a jinx on this.
You're scared of the right wing?
No, no, I'm just saying, if for some reason this did not pass in the primary, could we go back for the general?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Santos, I'd refer to Eugene on that, but I think you can bring an issue back. What I don't know is can you bring it back as soon as the November election? But let me, let me just say one thing. Depending on the direction you give us tonight, we would be, we are planning on putting out factual information, very similar to the way we've done in post or prior elections, and mailing that out to every resident so that they can make as informed of a decision as they can with regards to this issue. The other thing I'll share is with all of the presentations that all of us have been making around our community and our city, my personal feeling and sense of it is, is that people absolutely understand, they absolutely get it. They, there's nothing like a flood for people to understand, but I also think we need to be sensitive to not sort of take advantage of or overplay that our community's been damaged, but at the same time, I think a sense of purpose and a sense of moving forward is sort of balancing both of those things. And so, we can, that's, you know, in the communication, we laid out alternative dates that we could hold the election on if council so directs, so.
Jim, is there, Eugene, is there any question of whether or not this doesn't pass in the primary? Can we bring it back in the general?
Mayor and Council, Eugene May, City Attorney. I am not aware of any, but I have not looked at the specific question, save for broadband. I know we brought it back, but that was separated by a year.
Right. Well.
So, we, I can look into that and get back to council if there is an issue.
I don't see one, and I have faith in the residents of Longmont, so I move that we direct staff to prepare resolutions, setting the ballot language for the twenty million and storm drainage flood improvements at the June twenty-fourth primary election.
I'll second that. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I want to point out that I learned at the retreat, I kept my mouth shut, didn't share my ideas immediately, so the, but now I get to. So, the, my thoughts, as I hear the presentation and hear concerns and thoughts of my colleagues here on council, is that, first of all, we already went from seven dollars and sixty-six cents up to thirteen dollars and five cents, and essentially, that's, I mean, it's taxing everyone the same amount. And so, lower-income homes would have a tougher time footing more of the bill. So, I think we set expectations of twenty million. I'd feel uncomfortable asking for more, given that we don't know if we're going to need more. I also, every time that I'm short on cash in my business, you know, you work harder and you find the money. And so, I think that the same principle applies here. We need twelve and a half percent to match, and it's up to our fine staff to figure out a way to get that fifty-two million dollars. So, go for it. And then, and I guess the other thing is, I think that we've got a unique opportunity in that the longer this goes, the longer it gets from the flood to when we actually go to the public and ask for money, every day that goes by, I think that people forget a little bit more about how bad this was and how badly we need the money. And so, I, and I also, I mean, I agree with Councilmember Levinson that I think June twenty-fourth, yeah, not as many people participate, but I don't think this is a show the democratic process. We need the money, you know? And so, I think also people who vote in those off, off elections are probably a little bit more informed, and they're probably more likely to vote this rather than getting a whole bunch of people to come out, maybe don't research the issue and say, "I don't want another tax." So, I personally think that June is probably our best shot, and we shouldn't let the opportunity go by, and I think twenty million is the right number. So, I'm going to vote for it, and I want to point out that I also, Councilmember Finley, kept my comments to less than three minutes. Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson?
So, let me, I understand that we might have motivated voters for the primary election. However, about a third of our voters are independent or not affiliated with either party. So, the impression with the primary is that you're only going to vote if you're a member of a political party. So, I think that there's going to be a challenge in this election. When somebody gets a mail ballot, they'll be like, "Wait a minute, the news media keeps saying, 'Vote because you're Republican or you're Democrat.' Why am I getting a ballot?" They may not even open the ballot. So, I think there's an additional challenge. Maybe we could, you know, figure out a way for a third of our population who might think that because they are not part of a political party, when they get that mail ballot, for them to know there's something important inside, and not just to say, "Maybe this arrived in my home by error." And I think that's going to be our biggest challenge.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero?
Thank you.
Let's take a ten-minute recess.
Okay, could we resume the council meetings? Could everybody come back to their seats?
You know, they need to do kind of Waldo. We can keep Waldo moving along the big map.
I like the hill and the gulf. Yeah, I like that, too.
You got the fire in the belly, or is it...
You know, I'm not getting quite as angry around here.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is a fee study request for proposals, and Joanie Marsh will introduce this item. Mayor Coombs, members of council, Joanie Marsh, Development Services Manager with Economic Development. This evening, myself and David Starnes, our redevelopment manager, are bringing forward a proposal to send out a request for proposal regarding three specific items, actually. Two of those are impact fees that have not been reviewed in a significant amount of time. One is the transportation community investment fee, and the other is the public building community investment fee. Both of those have been in place for well over twenty years. The methodologies are still the same methodologies that were put into place when those fees were enacted. So what we would like to do with those two, in conjunction with our Public Works and Natural Resources staff on the transportation fee, is take a look at the legal requirements that are set out in state statute for impact fees, and also take a look at the public community investment fee. The other impact fees that the city does impose are typically looked at through the utilities. So currently, Public Works and Natural Resources is doing a rate and fee study that is looking at all of the impact fees for water and sewer. LPC will be doing a rate study, potentially this fall, on the ECIF. And so these are really just the two that are left over that have not been looked at. The other item that we considered taking a look at are development application fees. And development application fees are those fees, so if you're going to apply to do a minor subdivision, do a planned unit development, an actual development application, we have a list of fees. Those have not really been looked at in totality since probably the late nineties. And so that would be another thing that we've been meaning to take a look at, just haven't exactly had the time from a staff perspective to get into that. And then finally, another thing that, as David's been working in the redevelopment realm here in Longmont, he's looked at all our impact fees and how they come into play when we look at doing public-private partnerships. And so taking a holistic view at all of our impact fees in a redevelopment scenario is the other thing that we have included in this RFP. A couple of our fees actually do have some allocation for infill and redevelopment, but all of them don't. So it would just be an opportunity to take a look at that and an opportunity for council to see what that could look like, so that perhaps every project isn't a one-off in terms of fees and incentives. So that would be the third thing that we're looking to do. The proposed funding for this is from our incremental development revenue. So that is revenue that is basically, pretty much, one-time funding, and per policy goes back into development services. It's based on permit fees. And in 2014, we actually had $260,000 worth of development fees, or incremental revenue. $200,000 of that is going towards the Acela project, which is the new permit inspection planning, public works licensing software that we're implementing. And then there's $60,000 of that, which currently we were going to put into the public improvement fund. That has not happened, but we would need specific direction from council if we were going to use that $60,000. So that's the other reason we're being very specific about the amount. Although I would also say that I think certainly there are opportunities to spend less on this. Typically, we like to give a range in our RFPs so that people know what they're working with, but we'd certainly be open to reducing that amount as well if council were to direct us to do that. And I think, I think I'll let David say a couple of words just about the redevelopment piece before we take questions.
Good evening, David Starnes, Redevelopment Manager, Mayor, members of council. As Joanie mentioned, the third piece is something that, you know, we're encountering more and more, and particularly to public-private partnerships and kind of the financing gap that developers are offering, encountering related to moving forward projects that are located in challenging locations that don't have market support. And so what we'll be asking the consultants to do is really take a holistic look, as Joanie mentioned, of all of our impact fees that we would charge to a potential developer or property purchaser and to see a lot of differentials that could be administered versus, say, greenfield development versus infill redevelopment, whether there's existing infrastructure already in place, whether maybe credits are already there in terms of water, sewer, and other types of infrastructure related to redevelopment. And so we think it's timely, given what's going on in the market today, and particularly as our community moves forward, and that we expect to see more and more redevelopment as the city builds out and the city looks inward towards opportunities within our existing community. So with that, open for questions.
Councilmember Bailey.
I'm sorry, I just can't help it. Had to push the button. I guess the, I don't have a question, but I have a concern, and maybe, maybe get followed up with the question, "What do you think?", you know? The, uh, I understand why you want to do it, but I don't have a problem with one, two, three, four, or six. And so my opinion is, and this is just me, again, going back to my SimCity analogy, is that I think that we're seeing redevelopment and construction and progress because we're staying out of the way of development. We're actually, if anything, encouraging development, public-private partnerships and open arms. My concern is, even approving this project, even if needed, with number five in there, you know, without even communicating anything to the developers in Longmont, we're seeing Steve Strong, we're seeing Wendell Pickett, we're seeing a lot of the other developers saying, "Whoa, whoa, 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 whoa." So just when things are starting to get good, now all of a sudden you're going to put up a red flag and make us think that you're going to be against us again? So I think one of the key problems that municipalities make is that once we kind of find our rhythm, then all of a sudden we start asking, "Hey, how can we get a little bit more money out of this?" So I know that we need money as a city, and I know that we've got the budget reset, et cetera, but I think we need to be really careful about killing the chicken that lays our eggs. And so I, well, I like eggs and bacon. But, uh, so when I see identification and recommendation of development impact fees currently not administered by the city of Longmont that could be considered by the city for future consideration, I think what developers see is, "Oh, well, now they're looking for a way to gouge us again." And I, for one, think that it's a good idea to do one, two, three, four, and six, because if anything, you know, I'd like to find ways to cheapen it and make it easier, so we have more growth, more redevelopment, greenfield, brownfield. I want our economy to thrive, but it's not going to if we strap the construction industry, or, I'm sorry, our... It's not going to thrive if we strap, you know, the construction and development industry with, with all the costs. And I think that was the whole point before previous councils, well as this council, at least I helped this council, in basically saying, "Let's, let's cut the red tape. Let's make it easier. Let's partner with these guys." So I'm really concerned that if we approve this, that that's the message it's sending. So I want to get something done, because I want the other bullet points, but I don't like number five in the message it sends. That's just my point.
I guess I must have listened to a different public testimony from Wendell Pickett than you did. I thought he was for looking at impact development fees. Go ahead.
Councilmember Finley.
And I think we're all reading this differently, because what I was looking at with number five was that, you know, there may not be fees that are currently, impact fees not being administered, but the whole other part of the analysis may say, for certain types of development, we may need not to do some of these other fees, and there may be other fees that would, would either take their place or be lower. To me, it looks like we're kind of doing our, maybe a bit delayed, standard review of, just like we do with the enterprise funds with utilities. We have those fee studies for the, you know, electric utility and other utilities, the wastewater utility and all that, and so we're, we're kind of doing catch-up here. The one thing that I think we're doing, though, is, without looking at the comp plan, to know what our community sees as the future of land use and where things would logically go, how would we know to set fees to keep ourselves in balance? And let me give you an example. You know, when we looked at what fees were being allocated for park impact, and then we found that, we didn't, not, not only did we find we didn't have enough money to build the parks, but we didn't have enough money from the revenue of all the new rooftops to sustain the O and M. And so twenty years later, or not quite, I mean, a lot of the, the impact fees happened in between, like, ninety-nine and, and two thousand, or maybe going back to, even nineteen, the mid nineteen-nineties. So we thought that everything was peachy keen. And now, I'm thinking, unless we have, look at what our comprehensive land use is going to be moving in the future, we can't right balance any of the fees to know that we will have enough coming in, a fair amount, coming in from new development, redevelopment, whatever, to keep us sustained, so we don't have a surprise like we did with the parks. And I just, you know, ten years from now, I don't want to have a big surprise again. And I understand, you know, the, the issue with infill development, frankly, is that, you know, we're already paying, I think the opposite is true. When you're looking at development on the, the edge of your city, the, the structure that goes from either the main police station or the main wastewater treatment center, you've built the infrastructure all the way out. So it's not the cost of the infrastructure for the last hundred feet. It's really the, the cost that goes through the entire system. So when you're looking at redevelopment, in some cases, an empty lot, we've been paying and supporting infrastructure improvements and keeping infrastructure, all those links in place, where we've not had any revenue to support the link running in front of those properties. So that's the, the kind of, of ideas we have to explore. I'm just thinking, this is kind of done in a vacuum unless we start working on comp plan.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Although you've mentioned several times that it's been many years since we looked at some overarching policy when it comes to development fees. How many times have we raised those same fees in the last fifteen years?
Have Joanie come on.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley. So all of the impact fees are on a annual assessment where basically they go up typically, you know, in the two to three percent range, but that's based on cost of living. So those do go up a small amount every year automatically. Those are built into the ordinances as they currently are written.
I see. So we haven't had a comprehensive study. How, how do we know how much to raise those fees in the past?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley. So not having been part of the genesis of some of those, those fees and ordinances, I can't really speak to that. I know that in, in my tenure, kind of overseeing the fees and the implementation on an annual basis, it's simply been based on those cost of living adjustments based on the E and R and the, and the building record reports. So it's been that way with even the parks fee in the past. So all of those fees have been on that adjusted schedule.
On a sliding scale.
I think that's, that's the reason we want to actually dig in and look at this information, is to get more granular into what, what the basis is and, and start putting that together where we have that methodology. And then in the future, when that question's asked, we can actually say, "Here's exactly, here are the components, and this is what it looks like." Similar to what we, we did in the, in the park fee when we laid that out for you all and said, "Here's what it looks like," and that was related to parks in, in that aspect of, of that impact fee. So that is part of what we want to do, is really break that down and look at it.
Well, the, the one thing, you know, the nine most terrifying words in English language is, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help you." This is what it sounds like to me. I think if there are fees that need to be raised, let's raise them. Let's be transparent about it. Let's not pay seventy-five grand for a nudge, nudge, wink, wink study that we can hide behind to raise those fees. I think it should be transparent, and I think our local developers and, and builders should be part of, of that discussion. When I, the first year I was elected, I brought together some builders and developers to discuss fees and where they come from and what they should be. We had two meetings before staff just stopped wanting to meet with them. They hated it, and it went nowhere. These are the people who build our, you know, the local people who have built our streets and our infrastructure, and we're leaving them out of the, out of the picture. I think it's wrong. I think what we do when we raise fees is we invite only national companies to come build cookie cutter houses that we don't like, because our local builders can't afford to build here anymore. And I think it's, I think it's a travesty. And I think I can support looking at all these things, because yes, we do need to take a look at them. Are there fees that need to be raised? Probably. Are there fees that should be lower? Probably. Are there new fees that maybe we need to look at? Sure, probably. And there are fees that probably need to go away. I am in total agreement with that. I am not in total agreement with hiring an outside company to come in and do that. And I really think that we're harming economic development in going about it this way. And I, you know, that's, it got me quite riled up today.
Mayor Coombs. Councilmember Finley. May I comment too about the transparency? I think one of the things that's really important, too, as part of the study, is, is the methodology and the formula that goes, you know, the, the high these fees and how they're calculated, and making sure that they are transparent and frankly, easy to understand. And I know with the park fee, the, the formula that we got to, how, what the number is, is, you know, was really convoluted into the extent that we, as city employees, can communicate, "Hey, this is how this fee is built, and this is the reason why." And to go explain it in a, in a, in a public situation easily is, is important, too.
Councilmember Christianson.
Okay. I, I really do think that any organization needs to reevaluate the way it's operating at least every dozen years. And so I do think that this is needed. I do think there's a value, I would like to think that we could do this ourselves, but sometimes there really is a value in having somebody with outside expertise and somebody with no, no dog in the fight, you know, to evaluate things. So, I don't know, I admit to this. I, I really do agree with Bonnie that, that the developers should be part of this discussion on some level, because, you know, just hearing from Mr. Pickett and Mr. Strong about the costs rising above twenty percent for materials, that's very valuable. We don't want to drive people out, especially not the local guys who, you know, we need more housing and we need more development. But I do think that we need to reevaluate things, as Harold said, on a more granular level, so there's more nuance. For instance, when we're getting someone, a developer in who's building in a very challenging area where there, there's a high risk, where there's noise and there's, it's blighted, we can partner with them. Then we can lower the fees. I think we need to make a policy and have, and examine how to fairly add fees and drop fees or adjust fees so that developers know what they can expect. Otherwise, it's too hard. It's too risky for them. It's too hard for them. And I think this is actually a good idea. I don't think that number five is necessarily a bad thing, because it's, to me, that just says that there could be possibly new categories. Not necessarily more fees. Sometimes they can go down. Sometimes they can go up. Anyway, that's my two cents.
If you, uh, Councilmember Christianson and Councilmember Finley, in response, I think your suggestions are good ones, and I think that maybe as part of the scope of services, we can include a community involvement piece where we engage the development community, local and regional, to get their input, you know, through the consultant as to the fee structures and thoughts, you know, from a market rate perspective, so.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. David, you stole my thunder.
Sorry.
You know, and that's what I was going to suggest, perhaps when this is done, hopefully for a lower cost, that this would be a, this would be vetted by invite those builders and contractors and folks back in. You know, I've heard it through my, my time on council. "How did this come about? Show me the calculation." I can hear Kiki Wallace in my head right now, saying, "How..." You know, Joanie, we've had conversations with Kiki, sometimes long conversations, about, "How, how did this all come about? You know, is this one year, and this, this this year? And, you know, how, how did this calculation come about?" And I'm not picking on Kiki, but I've heard it from other people as well. I, I don't have a problem looking at this, because nothing is going to be set in stone. I don't have a problem looking at this, because nothing is going to be set in stone until council approves something. So, but until that, you know, five looks a little troublesome, but you know, then again, let's, what can be tossed out? What can be input, you know, what can be put in its place? But, you know, the price tag is a little scary, so again, try to come in a little bit lower. I hear everyone's sentiments, so I tend to agree with them all. But, the thing to remember also is that back, you know, I get the idea of the Comp Plan as well, but was the Comp Plan that we're under, was the percentage of park space too high? And I've always questioned that. Did we ask for, you know, at the time, I believe when the Comp Plan was implemented, we want all this grand park space. We couldn't afford it, even with the development that was going on at the time. So now we're at the point where we can't afford what we currently have, and in fact, even with the park fee that we have in place at the $4, and I know two of it's for flood recovery, but even at the $2, we saw presentations 10 years down the line, we're still in a deficit. We still can't afford even what we have currently, we still can't afford it. So, and that's with new stuff coming in that, if I'm not mistaken, Kimberly showed us, that's adding things to it. So I'm, I, we really need to see what we can adjust and what, if there's things we, as Councilmember Finley said, there are probably some things that we could increase and probably some things that could just go away. We don't know. So I have no problem going forward. I know there's other councilmembers that haven't had a chance to speak yet, so I'll refer to them. Let's Harold, you have something to say? Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Warren.
Thank you Mayor Coombs. I want to thank Joni for sending me the 2012 data that they were collecting for council retreat, it kind of gave me some perspective as to where Longmont stands. Longmont doesn't appear to be consistent in this place in the region as far as what development fees are charged and being that cost per cost in Longmont versus other places are going to be pretty similar in the construction industry, the major difference is where Longmont's located and the land values. And so what those fees should be, in my opinion, are probably should be on the lower side on some of those fees, especially when you get into the multifamily housing. We're like in the top five in the region for that particular development application. So I think it's a good thing to go ahead and rework all this stuff, and I like the idea of having a formula that says, this is how we calculate it, this is what it means, and this is what a developer can count on paying going into the whole process. And having the redevelopment piece as part of this is also something that will benefit us in the long run, I believe. Two things kind of trip me up. One of them is cost. The cost is, I just, it just doesn't seem like it's a value proposition at that amount of money. Second thing is, is the delay in getting that feedback and those results to six months out, where we've seen the flurry of development activity taking place. What we don't want to do is scare people off because we're doing this planning process now. And whether or not that happens or not is up to the developers, but having a good thorough evaluation would be something good. I really don't like the idea of spending 70 grand and six months to do it.
Comment?
Go ahead.
I guess I'd like to comment on several items. So I think in terms of budget, we certainly can push it down into a reasonable range. In terms of the timing, I think, you know, the goal is to have the study be completed by, you know, early September and bring forth to council in the fall. And I guess any changes or recommendations would not take place until next year, you know, from a budgetary perspective. But they would start, you know, we have three days to issue the RFP and we would select a consultant in May or in June and they'd have three months to complete it. So, you know, constrain as much as we can in terms of the timing to get it done, so we can make, come forth with some recommendations early in the fall for you guys to consider for early next year. But in terms of the budget, yeah, I think we can, you know, we can get that down to a reasonable number. And also I want to point out too that the TCAF portion of the evaluation is being paid for by the street fund, so not just the development fee fund too.
And the street fund is taking that broader look at the overall plan, because that is the one that connects more directly to a plan like that. A lot of these others are really related to operational costs in some ways, and so it's also going to push that operational look as part of the process too.
I just have a couple of comments. You know, obviously, you guys have thought about this long and hard and, you know, there's a lot of really capable people in your department. I mean, just everybody that I've worked with in that are very, very capable. And I'm sure there's people are probably capable for doing a lot of this work themselves, except for unless they're too busy doing, obviously, the city work they can't do. And so that's probably, I'm trying to read between lines, is why you'd want to do, hire an outside consultant, either because you're understaffed and you need that help, is that part of the reason, or?
I guess I would say it's a combination. I mean, there's consultants out there that only specialize in development impact fees, they know this stuff inside and out, and I guess getting their perspective as an outsider to say, hey, you know, you're missing something, you could be doing it better, have you looked at this? I think they're a critical third eye part, you know, third eye perspective that frankly, you know, we're lacking here, because they tackle this inside and out.
Multiple times.
Multiple times. And they work, you know, some of these specialized consultants have done a lot of stuff up and down in border county with cities, and so they know what's going on in the front range as well. And from a timing, sure, I mean, we're kind of, you know, there's, I know Joni's really tied up with Isella and a lot of other things, so just having that perspective would be useful, I think.
Okay. Well, with that input, you know, I would certainly support going ahead with what you're doing, so.
Councilmember Robinson.
A couple more questions. I recall we spend more than this when we do some of the rate studies, and they, they're like almost take nine months, and we do very methodical methodology and process analysis. And so I question, you know, why wouldn't we do the same thing here? Plus, we also spent a boatload of money when we did the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and that was quite a long process as well with a consultant. So, you know, I don't remember the exact fee, but every time we look at one of the enterprise funds, it seems like we do find people that are specialist consultants that have a broader perspective and know other things that maybe our staff is not exposed to. So the other thing is, I'd actually like to bring Brad Power down to the podium and ask him a question, since he's got some big perspective too, to find out if, hi Brad. I think you turned, did you turn it off? No. Okay. So I just want to know from kind of the big picture and national stuff, would it also be relevant for us to maybe look at what we compare, not just up and down the front range? Because in the big picture, what I've been reading is that we're competing against regions for not, not only companies, but employment, you know, drawing people, projects, and it's not just national, you know, not just national versus local builders, you know, it's trends. So can you tell me anything about nationally, is there, you know, some trend for people taking a hard look at what they do for fees and what the role of fees play in the development and land use area?
Good evening Mayor Coombs, members of council. Brad Power, I'm the director of the Economic Development Department. I think the primary focus, especially as it relates to residential development, is going to be on the region. I think as it relates to the city's efforts to attract major economic development projects, if we are competitively advantaged to other areas, not only in Colorado, but throughout the country, that's obviously a positive factor. I think, standing in the back listening to conversation, I think one of the things that I've heard in my time, that we've been trying to be very consistent about, which is where do we stack up in the region? And I think some of this discussion is a little bit apples to oranges, because a lot of communities don't provide the level of services that Longmont does. And so if you, if you kind of equate that, what are we doing to make sure that we're competitive in the region across the spectrum of development, both commercial and residential, to ensure that we are in the game and that those local builders are also in the game, because they provide vital service to our community, they employ a lot of our folks who live here. So I think one of the things that is driving this is to have that conversation about the future. Are we charging in the right areas? Now I'm repeating some of what our staff said. Are we charging in the right areas? Are there things that go down, are there things that we equate in different ways? And I think a more cogent explanation of what the fees are, how they're calculated, and what they're expended for, if we can tell the development community that in one or two sentences, that's something that we can't effectively do today, because in my opinion, a lot of these fees are very complicated, they're very complex to administer. If we can even that out, so that the community understands that, and especially the development community understands that, that would be a good result from this effort.
If I can add on to what Brad said, that's a very good point in the complexity. I know there's times where we get a call and we try to learn it, to explain it, and it takes a long time, just because of the complexity of the fees, and you want to be able to give that accurate answer and what it looks, what it looks like. And I think, so that's one issue we need to deal with. I think when you compare regions to regions, again, you have to be careful what you're looking at, because, I'll give you an example, when I've done this in my past, sometimes you get into a discussion of, well, what are the taxes in this region versus another region? And you can't simply look at a property tax rate or a sales tax rate, because in some cases, when I've done that in the past, you look at a property tax rate and it may be higher. But when you actually look at the valuations that exist in one region versus another, their valuations are higher. So at the end of the day, the area with the higher property tax may actually have a lower property tax bill when you start getting into that granular data. So that's a different look, but you have to be really careful with those nuances in that calculation, because I will tell you, I've seen it in a lot of different ways, and cities and regions just take a different look, but eventually they get close, but you have to make sure you're taking all those variables into account.
Mayor, if I could add just one last point, I just wanted to reiterate one of David's points about the redevelopment aspect of this. I think that's critical for the community going forward, because if, as we're engaging these public-private partnerships, not every one of them can be or should be a tax increment financing deal or something that is that type of tax sharing revenue situation, because fiscally, the city just can't absorb that for every single one of those types of projects. But if there's something that we can do to still get the services met overall by the city, to incentivize reinvestment in some of these areas that are incredibly challenging, again, that's something I think is important to take a look at as we go forward, because our fees right now are really stacked toward and written on the basis of a greenfield development scenario, and we have a hard time dealing with that redevelopment issue as we're having these discussions with these folks who are interested in these infill areas. I just wanted to add that.
And that's a point that I've made over a number of years now too, that the other challenge with redevelopment is, not only is it challenging for the development side, but as far as time, it takes extra time for staff. You know, there are many more balls in the air when you're talking about redevelopment as opposed to straight greenfield. And one side you want to be fair, but you also don't want the general fund to be subsidizing every single project. And I guess the last point really is that when you have fees that are directly assessed to provide service to the person who's paying the fee, you get what you pay for. I mean, if you want to run a very lean and mean service area, and people will get frustrated if their fees go very low, but they can't get anybody to return their phone call because there's not enough staff, they'd probably rather get their project done and pay a little bit more than have the project drawn out, because they just, we just don't have enough staff to service the people coming in and needing the service. Whether it would be, you know, somebody who's a homeowner, you know, adding on a mother-in-law over the garage, or somebody building a fourplex, or somebody building, you know, 100 units in all types of areas of the city. So I think it's a good idea, and everybody likes to have a lower cost point, you know. Longmont is very famous for wanting a bargain, so I think that's what we've said, we really do like our bargain. So if you can get us a great, an A-rated consultant at a C-rated price, that's really what we want.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you Mayor Coombs. I guess I wanted to clarify some, at least my comments and maybe others, the, this needs to be done, but, I mean, and it's a great idea, but I for one just wanted to go on record, so as the developers and all these people who are doing things in our great city, that they don't misinterpret this project as being what I think some of them fear, which is an excuse to increase fees. So, so question, so on the cost of the project, the 75, 60 to 75,000 dollar cost, is it possible just to put out an RFP and see what number of people come back with, rather than saying, hey, we think it'll be 75 grand? Because I agree with Councilmember Robinson, I don't necessarily want a bargain, but then again, I think we get a PhD student that's majoring in this stuff, paying 45, 50 grand and say, hey, get it done in six months, they'll be happy as a clam and we did great work. So as a former consultant myself, I used to do this. So yeah, exactly, you can do that. And so my response to it would be that, oftentimes, you know, in the RFP processes, you know, where consultants can ask questions, and my first question is, what's the fee? And so you get, and then, you know, the city municipality compile other questions and responses and then puts it back out for all the consultants to see. And so, to the extent, and that's how you mentioned here, to just give them a range, something to work with, but certainly we can go that way, but I guess my answer is sure that someone's going to ask what it is.
So there's a procedure in place, is that to issue the RFP, we actually have to have the funds appropriated, so that's a little nuance that we have to go through. So we have to go through the appropriation of the funds to issue the RFP, and that's something that we have in our regulations that we need to follow. So to a certain extent, what we're going to have to do is bring a budget ordinance back to you all. It is appropriated? Okay. So, that's what we're trying to find out. So you have to appropriate it.
But we have to say that.
What you can do in that is really manage your range. And so it's how you set the range that can guide some of that discussion, and that's actually, I think, a conversation point that we need to have.
Right, okay. So I guess part of my trepidation, again, I'm for the project, I just have concerns, and that is that my opinion, one of seven, with limited information, data and knowledge, my opinion is that you've got cities like Fort Collins that are on the base of the mountain and have CSU, or Boulder that's on the base of the mountain and has CU, or Greeley, that has UNC and their wonderful oil fields, you know, but they bring in revenues. We don't have those things. So if we're going to attract people, we need to build something cool. And so, or be cool, yes. But so, I mean, we need to, we need to build what will attract people. We need to be the type of environment and city that people want to live in, but we're at a disadvantage. A part of my concern is, by hiring consultants, you know, I'm always hesitant, because my definition of a consultant or an expert is anybody 30 miles away from home with a carousel of slides, that's what my dad used to tell me. And so I don't want to have an expert outsider come in and say, well, this is what everyone else is doing, without addressing some of the concerns that I think you're hearing, which is, we need to look at the data, but we also need to make sure that we don't send the message that we're going to stunt our development. And so I guess I'd feel a lot better if we actually had one more bullet point that said, identification and recommendation of development impact fees currently administered by the city of Longmont that should no longer be considered by the city. I'd feel better with that in there. And I would also echo the sentiments of my fellow councilmembers who said, I would like the developers to submit their input. I would even go so far as to say if a developer wants to spend a couple thousand dollars and do a study themselves and say, well, this is what Fort Collins does, this is what Longmont or Loveland does. I would, I personally would love to read those reports and compare it to the outside expert. And so, anyone else have any, can I make a motion or?
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion.
I guess I would move, I would move that we direct staff to proceed as presented with the caveat that we add in another bullet that basically says- the caveat that we add in another bullet that basically says they'll also identify and recommend, that will state identification and recommendation of development impact fees currently administered by the City of Longmont that should no longer be considered by the city. And we'll leave that motion as is.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion that's been mailed and signed by Councilmember Santos. Let's vote. Okay, that passes by two with Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Finley descending.
Hey, Mayor Coombs, your next item is the transfer development, transfer development rights policy issues for annexation, and Joni Marsh will also present this one.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Joni Marsh, Development Services Manager. So this evening, I have a host of staff, sometimes it does indeed take a village, and they are all here with me this evening to go over some respective pieces of the council communication you have in terms of service delivery as it pertains to questions around policy for annexation of transfer of development rights projects. In 1996, the city entered into an IGA, which we've included in your packet, to allow for transfer of development right projects that are built within the LPA or adjacent to the LPA, the Longmont Planning Area. And we currently have three of those, and we outlined those in your council communication as well. Unfortunately for us, Brian Schumacher has the institutional history on all three of those, and he is in the building, so I always appreciate his, his remembering back as far as he does.
So with our standard, and currently right now of those three TDRs, I should mention, we have had two inquiries from property owners within those TDR projects requesting that...
Just a second, Councilmember Lovison's got a question.
I just, can you go back to maybe square one about what TDRs are? And when you get a property, when we receive a TDR, I, I guess I'm, I haven't, looking for the right definition of, of what a TDR is and what does it mean when you accept a TDR? So can you go back to that base for me, please?
I can. So in your packet, I think the map attached to the IGA is probably, well, I don't think it is really bad. But basically, the, what was established with the transfer of development rights is you have sending sites and receiving sites. So sending sites are those properties where typically the county would put a conservation easement, and any development rights could then basically be monetized. And those development rights could then be transferred to a receiving site, and that property would then be able to build more units than it might otherwise be able to within, within that Boulder County zoning. And, but you have to purchase those, those transfer of development rights. So, so basically, we have, we have additional receiving sites and sending sites that are identified on this map, and I can certainly send that to you guys, too, in a better format, so it's not a black blob. But, but that's kind of the basis. You have sending sites and receiving sites, and the point is, you really want, the point of this was really to make sure that we were driving urban-level development closer to the city where they could utilize urban-level services such as sewer, which is an important one, so you don't end up with a lot of individual septic systems. So that was kind of the very basics of the program.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So let me make sure I'm understanding. So there was somebody that had a big parcel of county land, could have been like one homeowner and a ranchette or something, and they would have had rights within the county's planning sphere to put however many houses on it. Then the county said, no, we don't want houses built there because it's in the middle of Blue and Nowhere, and whatever other reasons. And they said, oh, property owner, if you allow us to do a conservation easement, like we've done many conservation easements, but we haven't, have we done a TDR? Have we done conservation easements? I don't remember. But then that means that that person gives up the vested right to develop the property with X number of units, and then somebody else who has a restriction on how many units can purchase that, and basically, if it's five houses, they can add five houses. Is that the right? And that usually is driven to the edges of municipalities because of service delivery. Is that the concept correct?
Yeah, correct. I think that's a, a good simplistic way to...
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood the process. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
So, so as I was mentioning, there are three TDR sites. We currently have one at Hoover and 66, which is Blue Mountain Vista's. We have one out on Clever Basin Drive and 75th, which is Portico, and we have another one that is off of Airport Road Summerlin. So recently, we've had a couple of inquiries from two of those sets of property owners about annexation, and there's nothing in the IGA that precludes annexation. We just have not gone through the process with anyone. So when we look at our current annexation policies, they're really geared more towards greenfield development annexation. And what you get with built TDRs is you have city sewer, and in one instance, you have city electric, but you have a water district, you have street standards that aren't necessarily built to a city standard, that they're built to a county rural cross-section, which is all fine and was part of the whole process. I think when folks have come to us recently and asked about what that looks like to annex, our standard policy really guides us to a place where all of a sudden, we're, we have a bunch of rules that don't necessarily fit what's on the ground. And the cost of annexing based on our current rules is, is also driven by those policies that don't anticipate the TDR process and that you've already built, you've already, you know, turned in water shares to a water district and are on a, on a separate water district. So our standard annexation policy really assumes you're in the Longmont Planning Area. One of these is not. It is actually outside of our planning area, so we would have to amend IGA to include them in the LPA. And we typically look at provision of city services that are built and, and designed to our standards. We also require historic water to be dedicated at the time of annexation, and then raw water at time of final plat. And all of these properties have been final platted through a different process, and a joint process us and the county. And then we also typically require a petition process to ensure compliance with the state statute, although there are provisions that we could use outside sewer tap kind of as a, as a way to request annexation as well.
So one of the issues, if you look at some of the, the agreements, the city does have the right to go in and annex these based on the sewer connection, and I think you can see that in the agreements. Part of why this is coming to you all is, as we were moving through this, Joni and Dale briefed me on this item. And this is not, so I think there have been previous conversations on this, and it looked like we were heading down the same road that we were on before. And then we started talking about the fact that the standard annexation policies design more for greenfield annexations. It really doesn't speak to this TDR component. And versus doing the same, going through the same brain damage on this issue, we felt like we needed to come to council and get some policy direction in terms of how we approach the TDR versus applying a policy that's really not geared for this discussion. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a great description, and I think anytime we have someone who wants to go through our development process and staff has a hard time articulating what that looks like, certainly we want to come back to council and say, well, we don't have a mechanism to help these people through our process. And so before we bring someone up to you as kind of a trial run, we thought it would be in, in our best interest to make sure that applicants are interested in, in coming through that process, have some idea about what some of those higher-level issues may or, may or may not be. So tonight, we're just going to go through, again, some higher-level discussion on, on the majority of the issues are utility-based, and we also have some emergency response issues we want to take a look at. So I'm going to turn it over to the requisite staff who are here to kind of go through the issues where they're the expert and I'm not. So first up is going to be Dale.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, Dale Radamaker, Polycorps and Natural Resources Directors. And so, as Joni's mentioned, I think to be as succinct as we can, if you've looked at the packet, I'm not going to go through all that again, but on this slide are sort of the, the key questions that I think we want to have a discussion with the council and the guys to give us some direction on. The first question is, these TDR sites that are, that are already currently developed or currently being served by either the Left Hand Water District or the Long's Peak Water District. And, 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 so the first question is, is as they annex into the city, as Joni's mentioned, typically, if they annexes in, they get all utility services from the city. I think, I think what we need to look at here is these, these TDRs are on the perimeter of the city. They are currently being served by the water districts. We're not aware of any issues that the, that the residents have with the water districts out there. And so I think the, the first policy question is, is if they come in and want to annex into the city, is it okay that they would stay on the district for water service into the future? In other words, there's, there's no timeframe that you have to come onto the city's water system. You could stay on Left Hand forever, for instance. And, and if, and if that is the case, is, are there any conditions that, that that would, that that would go forward on things like presuming that water service is reliable, presuming that water service is, is, you know, continued and those kinds of things? Obviously, if you've got Longmont citizens, say, say it's annexed in the future and the water district for some reason is not able to serve, then there would be issues on, on how to transfer over to the city in that kind of situation. But I think that's a very low chance of likelihood. So again, our raw water policies are really geared towards properties that have historically annexed in and are intending to receive service from the city. If that's not the case, then, then we could sort of step into these next questions of, of how to apply and what portions of the policy to apply. So that's the first, first question.
Thank you, Mayor. Dale, do we have residents that are being serviced by water districts currently?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Santos, we have, we have city facilities, the filing range, the shooting range on, on East 119 is being served by Left Hand. We, we have had in the past during the interim times, and when the farmhouse annexed until the, the property developed, they would stay on either Long's Peak or Left Hand. But I don't know off the top of my head that we have private businesses receiving water service from a district within the city.
Or, or residents.
Or residents. On the other hand, we do have sewer customers receiving sewer service from St. Green San Haitian District, for instance, with Concepts Direct Development out east of town. So we do have sewer districts serving, providing service within the city and...
So there is some sort of precedent that we have, that have done this?
Right. It's just not a lot, but then again, we haven't also annexed whole subdivisions, if you will, into the city that are receiving service.
And that's my question. Are we talking the subdivisions or are we talking individual homes? We're talking subdivisions.
Subdivision would be a more logical way or...
Just curious, that wasn't a great way to end that statement. All right. Okay. And I have some institutional knowledge regarding Left Hand because of my spouse. Okay, thank you.
I guess my comment off the top of the head is, if people like Left Hand water and they're serving them well, why would we care? I mean, I understand why we want them on our sewer system because you don't want septic tanks and those things on our borders, but, you know, if it's not broken, why fix it? It's kind of my policy. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Do we know if these, these subdivisions want to change water?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, my, my understanding is they don't. They, they, they are satisfied. And that, that was in the, in the council communication on the pro con. We're not aware of any proprietors that are dissatisfied with their water service in any TDR sites.
Do we have infrastructure that could carry our water to them without further costs?
Well, the cost that comes in of transferring, say, from the district to the city, the largest cost is how to deal with the raw water component. And I sort of laid out some alternatives on how to do that as well. And there could be line extensions that have to come into the area, but, and I have to look at each sort of individual site. My guess is, given the proximity of these TDR sites with the existing city boundaries, it's not a huge distance, so it's probably not a huge cost to connect into the city system. They're not big enough to cause a capacity concern. You know, it's not like we're annexing thousands of acres, it's hundreds of homes at that. And then it's how to apply, how to keep a balance. And so one way we have exchanged services between the city and the districts in the past, it had been through these water trade agreements where we trade taps. And we've done the most of those with Left Hand. Well, actually, we've done a lot with Long's Peak as well. So we're out of balance a little bit right now, but it's actually not as bad as I was thinking. We're only out of balance with Ford. And so we've historically taken on more of the water customers from the district to the city than vice versa. And so the dilemma that you can get into as a city is, is you can take on more customers than you're getting a water supply to serve. And so we tried, because there's no water rights transferred between the city and the district, we cannot give our water away without a vote of the people. And, and the district likewise doesn't really want to send water to the city. So we've agreed that there will be no transfer of historic water or, or water rights. And so you try to keep as close a balance as you can with the, the number of services trading back and forth, so it's as close to equal as you can.
I think, I think what my, what I would do, what I think makes the most sense is if they want to keep their, if they want to stay in their water districts, we let them.
Exactly.
And if they want our water, then we need to develop a policy that's equitable.
And, and if I can, I mean, and as I explained, there's, there's ways we can go about doing that. The most advantageous for a property owner is that we try to do that between the two water providers and acknowledge that they've already paid for their water service, and it's sort of inequitable to pay again. It's just that that can be challenging if there isn't a like amount of services that need to transfer from the city to the district. But it's not insurmountable either.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I've got some questions and just general thoughts, and I guess your, your last comment, it's inequitable. I guess I don't look at it as inequitable because currently, they're not in the city, right? So they can't vote for city council, they can't vote to determine, you know, if they, if they want to go shopping and they want to have a say in where the city's going, they're currently not in the city. And so I think that there is a benefit, you know, of having a voice, of having access to our services and being able to do the things that Longmont citizens do. So I guess my first question is, so looking at the packet, when it says there are higher costs to property owners to connect to the city water system, following closely with your discussion with Councilmember Finley, what, how many homes are up there? You know, and, and what would be, if they had to connect to the city's water and we had to do everything and we said, you're going to pay for it if we're going to let you into our town or our city, how much would I be paying if I was a homeowner? Are we talking 50 bucks? Are we talking $50,000 per home?
All right, closer to the thousands than the 50. And so let me step through that a little bit with you. A typical, a single-family resident tap fee is probably in the range of $6,000 to $7,000 for water. And, and these are sometimes very large lot developments, and our fee is based on the size of the lot plus the house, and so it could be even larger. That $6,000 to $7,000 is based on a lot size, I think, for around 7,500, is Barb still there? I'm alone. So it's, I think around 7,000 square feet. And then on top of that, the other, the other big charge that comes into play, again, if we're not able to do this through the tap trade thing, is the issue of the raw water. Right. It's that, that is expensive, and so it's thousands. It would be...
Okay. So I guess my next question is, what, we did away with exceptional benefit, but what advantages does the city have in actually annexing these neighborhoods in?
What, what property tax?
What else?
I don't know if I want to, if I can answer all those, but you know...
In general?
So in general, I think it's continuity of an urban area. If you, if you, if you, if it sort of looks like an urban area, they... If you, if you, if you, if it sort of looks like an urban area, that it is an urban area, it might make sense. Um, I think, uh, the property tax issue comes into play. I think the, the, the extension of the community into what was already planned to be the Longmont planning area, there's some, it's not as though we hadn't planned to ultimately urbanize the area. Um, I, I, you know, my guess is they have a connection with the Longmont community anyway, that their, their kids probably go to school here, they shop here, I mean, they're, for all intents and purposes, they're, they're in the community, if you will. They're just not in the community.
I, I guess my only concern, so my question is, how do we avoid this? Okay? And I, right now, it's not broken. Um, uh, I can see the benefits of continuity, property taxes, you know, we're, they're already our neighbors. That, that, hearing that resolves those concerns. But let's fast forward 20 years when this council is, you know, retired, some of us dead.
Thank you.
No, no problem. I didn't look at you, Dale. Yeah, well, so let's, let's assume this 20 years down the road and nobody in this room is working for the city, we're not here anymore, and it is broken. And part of our responsibilities, the, part of our responsibilities that we have towards our citizens is providing the, the basics, you know, making sure that we have that infrastructure. And so what, what happens if left-hand bails, gets broken, goes bankrupt, makes a mistake, they don't have the same, I mean, we have this discipline called law that we have to do, whereas left-hand, I mean, what happens if Ricky Santos leaves for heaven forbid and everything just goes downhill? You know, and so, I mean, that, that is my concern. What would be the plan in the event that they thought, they call up and they go, wait a second, we don't have water? Or we, we just don't have water and the city needs to help us? So what would happen then?
So Mayor Combs and, and Mayor Portman Bagley, um, that can happen whether you annex these folks or not. Um, and the good news is we have a intergovernmental agreement between the city and left-hand that calls for mutual aid and those kinds of things to occur, which by the way, happened during the flood. And, um, and so that relationship is already there. And I think the district, and I hope to try to express this in the community, they have a long history. You know, they, they, they're not as old as the city. You know, they actually started back in the early 1960s. And so they're, they're going on 50-some years. They are a taxing authority, they can tax, they can set fees. They're a very viable mode of delivering water service. And I think, um, you know, uh, I think they're a viable way. I don't think there's as risky, say, as a, a metro district or something that, that might go away, that, that got over-leveraged or that kind of thing. They're more of a long-term institution delivering water service. But ultimately, you know, worst, worst case, worst, worst case is, is we would probably be having this same, or whoever's after us, would be having this similar kind of discussion. How do we resolve it? Do we try to, because it's, if the district goes belly up, it's going to be a much bigger problem than just the few residents here, because there's going to be thousands of residents along your southern boundary or southern border that are going to be in crisis.
So, and last question, and then I'm going to turn off my mic, and that is, it sounds like I already know the answer, but you being the expert, you know, city staff, uh, us being laymen elected to serve political offices, but you being the expert, is this a good deal for the city? Is this what needs to happen?
I think if there is, if the council decides that there is an interest of the city in the issue of bringing in and annexing these TDR sites, which, which was contemplated as a possibility when they were formed, um, if you decide that that is an important thing and good for the city overall, I think what we're saying from a utility perspective is it can continue to be served by the district and not be, put the city in jeopardy or at risk. Um, and that, um, that shouldn't be the reason that you either do or don't move forward on annexation.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
I guess, um, I also have some concerns, especially when, um, we know, um, there's some other things perhaps unspoken out there. Number one, this burden that the county has laid on property owners for road maintenance.
Correct.
I mean, are we going to just be inheriting that too? And, I mean, this would resolve a lot of people's issues with the county on a road maintenance issue, which is huge right now, and, and I know in litigation. Um, and then the second thing that concerns me is when I look at the number of lots, it's one thing if we know everything and it's already built, we know what we're getting. But when, um, it looks like there's one, um, AKA portico, that 80% of the lots have been developed. Okay, that's fine. However, what happens if they're annexed in? Those last 20% will be under a different planning scenario than the county. And that might cause friction, um, because our planning standards over time have evolved. The other thing is when I look at, um, the Summerlin subdivision, only 20% of the lots have been developed. So when you're looking at equity and fairness, is it more equitable to bring, you know, the ones into the city under the normal process that everybody else from annexation has to go to? Or any changes, like we've been seeing a lot of changes on properties in this area that have already been annexed, amendments to the annexation agreements? Um, and, you know, there's a lot of unknowns. I mean, there's one of the Mount, Blue Mountain Vista, um, only two lots have been developed. So do we look at that as an opportunity to master, you know, that they would come and want to have, you know, planned urban development overlay or whatever? You know, that gives us an opportunity to have something that really looks like the same standard of the city as an extension. So I think that, one other thing, I prefer not to make a firm decision tonight because there's so many balls in the air. I'd like to have some time to chew on this.
Sure. And, and to answer a couple of those questions, I think, um, the, uh, the city's sort of analysis, again, what we wanted to get tonight was before we send people to the grinder, so to speak, is to, what's the lay of the land? What's, what's sort of the outlook of the council? Basic thing, is it even a good thing that you want to pursue the annexation of them? If that's a yes, then I think each of these TDRs would still come through the process. And my guess is they are going to have different nuances to them. So one that's not developed at all probably has different, uh, opportunities to, to look different, feel different as it comes into the city, as opposed to one that's almost completely built out and there's houses on it. And so I, I think those are things the staff can manage, once, once the, what's the sort of the overall policy thing is, is giving us some direction on. And then that still is going to come back to you in the form of a council decision on whether or not to annex or not.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Sewer system's already extended into these residential developments, is that correct?
Sewer service is already, uh, uh, planned, it's already extended into the portico one. I think it's also extended into, uh, the answer's yes.
Okay. Thank you for the short answer. Um, I haven't looked at my utility bill in the last couple of months, but do we pay based on you, uh, flow, flows fees to sanitary sewer?
Um, Mayor Combs and Councilmember Moore, you, you, you pay two things. You pay a, a, um, monthly fee, a monthly charge, and then you also pay based on thousand gallons with a winter quarter average based on your usage in December, or, yeah, December, January, or February, if you're a resident.
And these non-residents, how do you establish that? If I can...
The way we're currently doing it is we are, they are paying a flat fee, and I don't know that number off the top of my head. And, and that's one of the, the benefits of, if they annex into the city, we might be able to correlate the, the billing issue better. Um, but if they stay on the water district, we're still going to have to, um, um, charge a sewer bill that's not necessarily calculated identical, but we can look at what the charge is and we know that it's close to what an average home is going to pay. So it's really not that hard to get a, a bill that's close. What you can't do is I can't tell one house compared to another. Like if, if you and Councilmember Levison live next to each other and you use 10,000 gallons and Councilmember Levison only uses five, if you're outside of the city's water system billing, which is how we meter the water, you're both going to say, pay the same bill. That's the potential downside. If you're frugal in your water use, you're still going to pay the same, same bill. But they've been doing that for years, so...
Okay, then, you brought up the point about raw water. That's, um, since there's a lot to be built out here, are there incremental benefit to going ahead and, and bringing those new lots into the city services?
Um, Councilmember Moore, I, in, in, in the case of a, say, as of an example of one that's partially built out or mostly built out, I, I wouldn't think you'd want to try to do that because that would imply that you're going to try to give city service and then you're going to have these overlapping, um, districts. So it'd be an inefficient delivery system. What, my second question on, on the thing here, uh, is the issue of the historic water rights at the time of annexation, which are the, the two pieces of the city's raw water policy. Um, and there's reasons for that, um, subjecting, I don't know if you want me to venture into that. Do you, is, is there a sense that we have a, an agreement that if I'm reading you guys, it's okay if they, if they like their water service, leave them alone and they can stay on, on the respective districts that they're on at, at that time?
One more question.
Okay. I'm trying to get that one sort of resolved before I move into the historic water issue, but...
Do these other water districts build their infrastructure to the same level of standards that Longmont does as far as flow rates and pressures and everything that would be useful for fire protection?
Um, Councilmember Moore, they, um, that is something I would need to further analyze. I, I believe the answer's yes, uh, certainly in the case of left-hand, um, because they have the same insurance requirements. I know from a quality perspective, they have to meet the same Colorado Department of Health quality issues. Um, and I do believe that they are building their new infrastructure to meet the necessary fire flows. I also believe they may also have requirements with regards to sprinklering some of the buildings and some of the homes. And so you can deal with this fire flow issue in a number of ways. And I think that's, I think, again, part of the analysis that we would do, but, um, I, I don't have any reason to think that they're building substandard infrastructure from a flow perspective, in particular for fire.
Thank you, Mayor Combs.
Uh, so based off this next point and the next point in our packet, as well as Councilmember Levison's, I know we're talking about water, but, um, uh, but the, but what we've learned in our assessment is we all like to move quick, so these some of us. The, uh, so I guess my question is, are any of these, are any of these neighborhoods the lawsuit? Meaning the, about, about the streets?
I don't know.
Okay, so, right, so, I mean, so basically it's possible if we say, for example, the, the Blue Mountain vistas, um, I speak Spanish, you should say vista, sorry. But, uh, sorry, yeah, whatever, that didn't sound right. The, uh, this is, but, uh, but, uh, a little shout out to, to my wife. The, um, so back on track is the, the question is that, uh, so in addition to water, roadways, just overall, if we annex them in, can staff also come up with an idea and present to council? If they come in at that time, when they come to us, this is what we suggest, make sure they pay their way?
Yes, and that, that, that's explained in the communication, that we would do an analysis of the remaining useful life of the street cross-section and report that back.
Okay, next, and then electric service, I don't know if you're going to address that as well, but the next question I have is the same question of what would it cost to force them onto our electric? And I'm sure you will present beautifully, but I mean, the same questions I think that we all have for water, we have for electric and broadband, et cetera.
Jody's going to push me away from the podium, but let's, if we could get, if we could, um, do the water things and we'll move to the electric, if that's okay. And also want to go to electric now and see everything. Okay, so, question one, I'll, I'll pose the question again, is, uh, if, if they are currently being served by an outside district, which they are, um, one of them the case is Long's Peak, the other two on the south is left-hand, um, is, is it, should they continue to receive water service from the water district? Is that acceptable even after annexation? That's the question.
As far as I'm concerned, it is. So we just take a vote on that? All right, let's vote on that. Let's vote on number one.
Do we need an official motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we...
We can take the information and chew on it and figure out the rest of the project.
It's not necessarily that you're going to absolutely do this at annexation, it's to give us some sense of where the council is on this particular issue.
Ultimately, if we can bring back options to council that you will have to vote on, if, if they go ahead and approach us, we will bring back those options and you all will have to vote on those then.
I'll make the motion that, that we should consider if the TDR, if the water districts are doing the job and that people are happy, there's no reason why we should change that model.
That a motion, yeah.
Okay.
So if the condition you're putting on in if people are happy, I don't know if that's
pretty vague, because you said if yes, are there conditions where that should not be the case? If people are unhappy is basically what your motion, I mean, but I don't know the definition of how, how unhappy do you have to be? Like somebody took away your cake or somebody, you know, took away your car or the race seemed to be too high now or...
I, I think what we're looking at is...
I don't understand.
I think what we're looking, what we're looking at is if they, so if someone approaches us and they say, we want the city to consider annexing us, but we want to stay on left-hand water. That's essentially, it's, it's more the area saying, we want to stay on the existing water system, we don't want to go, we don't need to go onto your water system. I think that's really what we're looking at. They may come to us and say, we want you to consider annexing us and we want to go on your water system. Different conversation, different numbers.
Thank you, Mayor. That's what I was going to suggest. So I guess what the mayor was trying to indicate in his motion was exactly what Harold said. So can we go with what?
That interpretation.
That's called interpretation. Is that okay with everybody? For that motion? Is everyone okay?
Yeah, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to one with Councilmember Levison deciding.
Okay, so the, the second question I have for you, which is hopefully, you know, maybe an easier question, um, is the issue of historic water rights. And so the city has always had those historic water rights transferred to the city at time of annexation. And, um, they, uh, for a lot of reasons, obviously to, to generate a water supply for the customers that ultimately would receive service from the city. But the other reason for the transfer of the historic water rights is to sort of clean up all of these little ditches moving through the city, so you don't have that sort of mess going on and people trying to take delivery of water. Uh, the, the second, which I think is, is important as well, is that these historic water rights many times aren't able to be transferred up to the water plant, but we are able to use them to irrigate city parks and greenways. And so it is a way for everybody to contribute towards the irrigation of city parks and greenways, whether they get water service directly from the city or not. And so the question here is, is should historic water transfer to the city irrespective of who the long-term or even interim, uh, provider is? That's the question.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. So how would, if they're going to stay with the water district, regardless of who the water district is, how would we negotiate that with the water district?
Um, so Councilmember Santos, um, I would not, uh, would not recommend that we would take any water that the property owners have already dedicated to the district for service. So I would not consider that to be water that is remaining. Many times, uh, say in the case of Long's Peak, they really only accept, uh, Colorado Big Thompson units. And so the historic water, sometimes the historic ditches, the Rough and Ready or Pleasant Valley, that, uh, the property owner either retains and maybe the, uh, HOA has control of or those kinds of things. And so, um, and in that case, let's say in, in the case of an HOA that, that has it, then what the, what we would probably recommend is, is returning back enough yield back to that HOA so they can continue to irrigate. We, we wouldn't want to dry up the HOA when they annex. But it's, it's really a case of the city accumulating the historic water rights basically in this, in the St. Brain, so that those are, um, sort of held for the public and, and they're used broadly for the public. of held for the public and, and they're used broadly for the public.
That's Mayor Levison.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the other option is they could also pay to get in, right? They, uh, if, they would, they would, um, I, so let me clarify that. Um, the historic water is, isn't something that you'd pay cash in lieu. Um, and so if there is no historic water, you know, let's, let's say the property's developed and the historic water is, has been sold or been transferred, there is no, because the water is historic at the time of annexation. It's, it's the water that's on the property at the time they annex. So we have obviously not done the analysis to know, A, what, what historic water remains, if any, on these properties. Our question is, if there is historic water remaining on the property, should we, as a process of reviewing them through the, through the annexation, um, inform that it would be the intent that that were transferred to the city if and when the council approves the annexation of the property? So other than just transferring the water rights, there's no economic impact? Then I, I would move that the policy should be that we should require that if historic water rights exist, that they be transferred to the city.
Councilmember Levison?
If they're not wanting to use our water, why would we require them to give us their historic water rights?
Yeah, as I, as I noted, um, I'm sorry, Councilmember Finley, um, the, uh, the basis for this historic water is, is that the city would then turn around and use that on parks and greenways, which benefit the entire public.
Okay.
Yes. Councilmember Levison?
I'm trying to wrap my, my head around, um, kind of the comparison of straight annexation and then annexation of a TDR. However, if we annex, um, raw land, then if the historic, there aren't any historic water rights left on that, they still have to contribute, right? To, that annexation would still have to contribute a certain amount of water, which would be not only the individual, the water for individual units that would be built, but also water to contribute to the greater good for fire protection, for watering parks, for, you know, street sweeping water, whatever else we need, and public facilities water.
So Councilmember Levison, um, so if a property annexes that has zero historic water, then they have to meet the full raw water policy, which is typically three acre feet per acre. And that is a gross number that does, is intended to cover all uses. Um, that is a, um, that has happened in my career a couple of times, that we've actually annexed dry land or land that the, that the water had been severed or separated sometime in the past. And so there is that, that nuance to it that, that could occur. But what we don't do though, at time of annexation, and, uh, and, and don't assess that additional cost until you come and get water service from us, is to exact that additional, um, cash or water or other, um, water right, um, for these other uses. Because again, it was, it was in the aggregate. And so I understand what you're saying.
But also when it was a particular, our building though, it comes with, when you're annexing to the city, it comes with the whole range of services that we provide when, and that's a value to being in the city as opposed to being in the county where you're not getting municipal services. And there's a certain thing that comes with municipalization. Um, and I guess, you know, could there be a circumstance where somebody could just have water trucked into their property and not actually be on a district water service? They could have, you know, maybe tap into sewer, but you know, if you had a very large cistern and you wanted to be really off the grid, you could decline to be on electrical, you could decline to be on water and have water trucked in if you were very frugal with your water.
I think, um-
And then what would you do with water rights then? Because nobody would be providing water service.
Those are great, those are great possibilities. But I think the first one on, on sort of trucking in water, um, I, I know our own standards and I think county standards require you to be on a public water system. And so I don't think that that's real viable, although heck, I don't know if somebody really wanted to go there. They might be able to, but I don't think that that's a likely potential.
That's a pub, that's a state public health.
Yeah. I don't think there's a likely potential for that today. Um, and so what we're trying to balance, I mean, that's, you're exactly hitting between, you and Councilmember Finley, you're sort of hitting that balance between, well, why would we ask for anything? If they're not getting water from, from us versus, well, if they don't have any historic water, then why don't we try to get some more? That's why we're here tonight, is to try to figure out that-
And it's not just the water, the water to the individual unit, but it's also all the infrastructure that goes with the water utility is being supported by, just like, you know, you build your, your water infrastructure, delivery system and, and sewer system for, um, you know, X number of volume. But when you hit a certain point, you're going to have to up your, your level of, of capacity. And that costs money. I mean, we've talked about this with power generation. If you can conserve and not have to build a new power plant as soon-
New generation.
You, you know, you save all that additional cost by not having to build bigger. So I'm just wondering, I'm just having, uh, um, I guess I, I need some, some time to, to process everything to understand the nuances here that were not absolutely as black and white as the pro and con statements in the chart.
And if I create a real quick, I think part of what you are also hitting on is the, a magnitude issue. If, if, if we were coming to you with a, a, a 2,000 unit development or something that was substantial, I think we'd probably have a whole different analysis on it with regards to potential impacts, potential risk to the city. You know, the size of these compared to the overall magnitude of the city's system is not, is, is, I don't want to say insignificant, but is not of a magnitude that's going to make or break the, the long-term outcome, I don't think.
Okay, I got an issue. I got my turn. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
So I think I'm turning this over.
Hi, Captain Michelle Goldman, Public Safety Fire Marshal for the city of Longmont. There, council. Um, so as far as emergency response issues go, these are the, these are the four areas that we really look at when we evaluate our ability to provide the level of service we think is important to any citizen in Longmont. And those are basically based on our life safety benchmarks, which are in the municipal code, mutual aid agreements. Fire flow, we probably want to request that out there, just because it is left-hand and we can't guarantee what they have in place already. So we'd want to know and make sure. And then access that would deal with roads setbacks, how far are other hydrants spaced correctly and, and based on city standards. So I guess I would take questions or any direction you might have for public safety.
Councilmember Levison? So that response time is pretty good, I think. Um, do you think that you can keep that the same? This isn't too far a rest, though. Or do you think you'd be adding substantially to that?
So to the, to the projected areas that they're talking about, I'm going at 66 in Hoover.
Oh, okay.
So you do have our response time in your packet. Is that correct? Okay. So the 66 in Hoover would probably not be a problem with our 559. Summerlin is going to be okay and our 559 is part of Portico. And it's kind of cuts it in half. It's kind of at the bottom southwest of your, of your diamond triangle. So is that concerning to us? Yes. Um, is it a critical deal breaker? Probably not, because the other half of Portico is in our diamond. Well, we look at as far as problems and concerns to us, though, um, is what if that station that's closest that is the designated 559 station? That's what, that's the way the code reads. You have to have fire and EMS be able to respond from the closest city station in 559. What if that is already committed, if that unit is committed? So then you look at, you kind of stretch that triangle and you kind of increase your response times. And fire, 41 of the houses in Portico, which is the area we're talking about, that's half in and half out, 41 of the 52 houses are sprinkled. They have 13 D residential sprinklers, 11 don't. So then, then our concern as well, okay, so that would probably enable them to get out safely. However, what about medical response? Because that's the other part of life safety for us. You know, you think of heart attack and stroke as being the time sensitive calls.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So this is a question for you and perhaps for another member of staff as well, kind of, I don't know. We'll find out who comes to the podium. So my question is what, what solutions are available in the event that Portico wants to annex in and, you know, they push their response time to 610 or 620, and we say, no, we need to hold firm at 559. That's the benchmark. That's what professionals say. So, uh, is there really such, I mean, what would the solution be? I mean, build another fire station or?
I'll go first.
Wise woman.
So I think, so I think part of it, you get into, you get into the mutual aid agreements. So one of the things that, that we know, and I just confirm this with Shell, is that we haven't responded in two years, but we have responded to, to that neighborhood from that fire station because of a mutual aid agreement with, with Mountain View, I believe. And so what you have in that case is mutual aid agreements. So to give you an example, um, we had a, a grass fire near McIntosh, um, last week. When you drove by, you saw a Longmont Fire Department, you saw a Mountain View Fire Department. Then there was a truck I didn't recognize. So I assume it was a birthed or hygiene or I'm not sure. So those mutual aid agreements come into play during that scenario. That's one solution. Um, if you look at the, can I see that? I can't.
The diamond.
Diamonds. Yeah. And so you see the diamond, it kind of splits the neighborhood in half. And so I think, you know, part of it is, and Michelle and I have talked about this, is, you know, what run line, what direction do they go in terms of the run? Um, then you get into time of day, you get into traffic flow patterns. I mean, there are different issues that, that really start circling, weather, that starts circling around that. But I guess the, the most basic answer would be is the, the mutual aid agreements. And that's what we would have to verify, um, in, in looking at each subdivision, because, um, there's a chance that, are all of these Mountain View or no?
Uh, Portico.
The other, the others?
Yes.
They're all Mountain View?
Yes.
So that means it would be a review of the Mountain View.
Okay. Well, then I guess I, I, uh, just in the interest of moving things along, I guess I would move that we also, Brett's staff, that before somebody's allowed to annex in, they need to meet the benchmark response time that our public safety department determines is appropriate. And that means specifically, they need to be within the designated area that we already have, uh, established or some other solutions, such as a mutual aid agreement, that will allow them to be reached within the benchmark response time.
Councilmember Brett, we also use the residential sprinklers as one of the options that is an alternative.
That would, that would, whatever you guys say.
All right.
All right.
Whatever they say.
Councilmember Levison? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, so you did mention sprinklers. Um, are, would insurance rates be affected in the city if we're not able to provide that 559 coverage throughout our whole protection area?
That's very, uh, sorry, Councilman Moore, a very interesting question. I know our ISO rating would probably not vary, which is a rating we use in the, in the fire service to cover the city. I, I wouldn't be able to address that at this moment, so I could research that. I don't know.
So I've, I've gone through an ISO rating process before. So when you go through an ISO rating process, they look at everything you do. They look at water lines, water pressures, fire response. It, it is a complicated formula that they move through and you get points in, in that system. So to say, I think it, it depends more on the aggregate examples and things that cause issues with ISO. I know of a town that was split in half by a railroad track. Railroad, that railroad track had long trains going through it. That dinged him on their ISO. So it, it can be any number of issues. When you look at your insurance rates, typically, when you go and you get homeowner's insurance, the insurance company looks at your ISO rate, and that's one of the factors. Then they start factoring in for the individual house. How far are you from a fire station? How close are you to a fire hydrant? Those types of things. And so it's based more on the individual structure than the aggregate when you get your insurance. And so a lot of times when I'm dealing with insurance companies and, and they say something and I know a fire hydrant's closer, I go, no, there's a fire hydrant within 1,500 feet. And I'll go measure it and show you pictures. And so it's really on the individual homes in terms of what they do, not on the city as a whole. That's your ISO rating that really impacts that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then does the city have any, um, four star rating or whatever system that you use to, to rate the city as a whole as far as your, your fire and emergency preparedness?
We think we're all, we would think we were all four stars. Uh, we got, that would be our ISO rating, which is insurance service organization. And that's how they rate cities and, and fire services and availability, our ladder truck hazmat teams, specialty teams, like you said, all those things come into play. Mutual aid agreements come into play there. Um, when you look at these areas as far as responses, even Mountain View's responses they had in the last two years, they only had 14 calls to all three of these areas combined. And that's EMS and fire, didn't ask for law statistics. So we're not looking at a huge amount of calls, no structure fires, did have some gas leaks on some of the construction sites. Um, the 11 homes that are not sprinkled, uh, it looks like their hydrant spacing is good. I know the county, when they initially put some of this in, they weren't required to put in sprinklers if they were within 400 feet of a hydrant. So it looks like their spacing is good and that would all add to a positive ISO rating.
Just, just for information, a four, ISO rating of a four is very good. When you start dipping down into three, two, and one, um, you, you're nitpicking at that point. And then there's also some significant costs. A lot of times they'll say, we want you to have two ladder trucks instead of one. You're looking at millions of dollars in that process. Um, frontline. So, um, a four is a really good rating for a community this size. And it's a testament to the work that they've done in the fire department.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you. Well, no, I'd, I'd like to make sure that we're looking at the analysis of this, not at what our current call rate is, especially when some of these developments we're considering have only two lots developed of 22 or 20% of, um, 34. I mean, once the other, the assumption has to be that we're going to look at four on capacity. And the fact that, you know, when you have very few lots, you're not going to have very many calls. But when you have many more and maybe the residents are, are aging in place, you might have even additional calls because of the aging of the, the development, um, the, uh, subdivision. So I think we need to look at, um, what forward rate, forward response times would be, um, on the trends that we already know existed in Longmont that we see. Um, the other thing is that when, uh, I know that there was quite a bit of an issue of when the fire station at, um, uh, Airport Nelson Road was built, there was a special district and assessment done for homes. And the bulk, there were quite a few subdivisions that basically came in on the payment of the first line subdivisions who didn't meet that benchmark standard. And they bore the brunt for years of heavy fees where that allowed, that capacity that they paid for got passed to them and then everybody else was able to come in on the coattails of it. And there were a lot of people that I heard from, um, in, uh, '07, '08, that were very displeased with that system. And I hope that we don't fall into that same trap again. Because again, we have to make sure that the quality, when we're annexing, that we do provide all the services at the same quality that everybody else has, whether you're, you know, 20 blocks from a fire station or on the very outskirts of the city. I think that's our obligation to people when they annex in. So I just want to make sure that, that we, we do have that capacity. And I know that some of the smaller fire districts do struggle when they have to raise assessments. And so that will affect our mutual aid agreements. Um, and, uh, that's really- And, uh, that's really a consideration that, um, we also need to, um, take seriously.
Okay, got a motion, got a second, let's vote. I pass the statement as well. Thank you.
You can throw it lower, too.
Mayor Coombs, Council Jody Hammond, LPC's engineering project coordinator. So as we talk about annexation with those subdivisions, we currently, um, have the state statute that outlined our territory areas. LPC does serve some outside areas of Longmont City proper, which is in Blue Vista. We do provide electric service to them. Summerlin and Portico, we do not. Uh, the process for annexation does have us transfer service from the REAs or the XL Energies to the city, and there are fees to do that. So, um, the utilities, the incumbent utilities are expecting to get lost revenue for one year, and they're also expecting to get, um, payment for any depreciation and the removal of their facilities. So as we look at those locations, we would have to make some decisions of, would they stay on other utilities? Pooter Valley REA is in Portico and XL Energy in Summerlin. Would you allow them to continue with those utilities, or would we require them to come over to LPC? And to do that, we would have to really look at their infrastructure, see what about their infrastructure meets our standards, and then also talk about what rebuilding we would have to do in that case. For certain, we would replace transformers. And then we would also talk about our electric community investment fee. So the fee that everyone pays as they upgrade or build a new service helps us fund our substations and main feeder growth. So we would be pushing capacity to homes that we did not plan to serve. So that would be, um, something to consider there. And I don't know if you have any specific questions for electric.
So to give a quick overview on electric, um, it's more of a mixed bag than, than water. Um, you heard where they do provide to, what was the name of this?
Blue Vista.
Blue Vista.
Blue Vista.
We also provide electricity to the hygiene area.
We do, and...
And we also provide electricity to Apple Valley, which is, uh, between Button Rock and Lion. So, um, if you remember the flood and you saw our outage map, you saw that LPC does stretch out into other areas that aren't in, um, the incorporated city limits. I wanted to point that out as well.
Councilmember Ray Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, the question I always ask clients is, what's the upside, what's the downside? And I don't, I mean, I don't see any upside and only downside to not require them to come into the city. Um, and I also think that, I mean, as we're going through the budget reset process and we're talking about parks and maintenance, it's important that we get all the money we can from the people who are using those facilities and our, our parks and our other, anyway. Eight percent into the general fund is a, is kind of huge. So I think that if they're going to become part of the club, the family, they need to contribute to our play space. And so, uh, I guess, uh, looking at the pros and cons, I only see pros. Before I make a motion, I mean, no one else has talked, so I'm not going to make a motion. But my, my, my question, like on water, was how much more? If we put all the cost on them and said, if you want to come into the city, how much is each household going to pay in order to, you know, uh, make those arrangements? One-year revenue and the cost of, you know, reimbursement of the depreciation on the unused asset and all that kind of stuff?
Absolutely, Mayor Coombs.
Me, Brian, you're right.
Um, it's a very good question. So electric community investment fee is dependent upon their panel ratings, so kind of like the water meter size. It could range anywhere from three-hundred-and-ten dollars, maybe up to twelve-hundred dollars per home. If we were to replace a transformer, that transformer's probably serving multiple homes, so they would share in that cost. In a new greenfield, if we were building brand-new with those size of homes, I would probably budget thirty-five-hundred to four-thousand dollars per lot. Um, and, and that should also provide some street lighting, which I believe they do not have today. So I think we'd have to look, I think it's a balance in between there. Um, if XL Energy uses conduit in their system, we might be able to purchase some of those things. If they do not, we may not want to, um, take over that burden for future replacement. So I think we'd have to investigate each subdivision independently and, and understand what infrastructure we would feel good about taking over.
Um, I, I think that, I don't know how we, I guess the next question would become, are there creative ways to, you know, slice that turkey, so to speak? I, I mean, are they, are you just, I assume we're not just forced to say, look, you got to give us thirty-five-hundred dollars, or else you don't come in. Are there ways to lessen that for, for those, uh, meaning going back to the whole cost-benefit analysis of, we're going to get eight percent of their future revenues, uh, off the building, so we want to maybe subsidize some of that thirty-five-hundred dollars? I don't know if that's possible, but, um, I, I, uh, I, I find it hard. I don't think we should stray from the idea that LPC in Longmont is what we continue with and have held so dear for, for the last hundred-plus years. No, two-hundred. No, hundred and, how many? I'm trying to think of the hat, hundred? Hundred and one? Okay, anyway, I knew it was a lot. So the, uh, the hat's hanging in my office. So, um, I, I, I think that we need to figure out a way that if they're going to annex into the city, that they need to, uh, figure out a way to become part of LPC. And I wouldn't be opposed to creative solutions to, to ease the pain if it is in fact high.
So part of the problem with the creative solutions is that you then would weaken the, the electric fund for the sake of the general fund. And so you would need to be very careful, um, in, in that analysis, one. Um, the, the other piece that, that's intangible in the conversation is reliability and the value of reliability when you look at our system. And so fundamentally, when you look at each one of these areas, they're all going to present different, a different set of circumstances. Some may be built to our specifications, and it looks different to them than those that aren't built to our, to our specifications. And so all of that comes into play into that equation. I think it goes back to almost the basic question. And, and you, and Councilmember Bagley sort of answered it from his perspective, but I think part of it goes back to the basic question that, um, the starting point that, that Dale started with. Um, it, do they, if they don't request to go on electric service, should we require them to go on our electric service? That's the first question. And then from there, we start working through, through the other issues. And, and, and some may want to come on our electric service, not only for reliability, but they may want to come in to get broadband, because remember, we provide broadband within our service territory. So even if they were in our city limits, but they were not in our service territory, we wouldn't be able to provide broadband for them, correct?
Yeah, I think maybe because they're annexed. So once they're annexed, they are in our service territory.
I know we, we had that conversation, and there's some uncertainty as to whether or not that can actually happen. So you have broadband in the mix, too.
You know, and not only consider why electric is different than water, um, is that, you know, electricity cost is cheaper than the two providers, or the fourth floor's cost. So even if you might have some upfront cost in changing, maybe over, you know, a six or seven year, you'd get the payback where it makes sense economically to change it if you had an upfront cost, perhaps. So that's another analysis for the people to look at.
Well, that's a good point, because when you look at the ECIF fee in particular, and that's in for infrastructure, and the way they charge the upfront fees, fundamentally what you find, um, especially I know with, um, XL and other utilities, is they charge that infrastructure cost as part of their fee.
Right.
Um, so in one respect, you're paying it in your monthly bill. In another, you're paying it upfront here, and then you have the lower electric cost on top of it.
Right. And there's plenty of capability from Flat River to provide, you know, but they're selling surplus electricity on the market now, so it's not like we have a limited supply that we can't, that's going to hurt our main source of electricity.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, water is a little bit different. You know, we do have some of the lowest rates in the state of Colorado. So I'm almost of the opinion that they should, in this instance, be a part of the, of LPC. But with, but saying that, there has to be some sort of mechanism to, and I don't mean to weaken the electric fund, the electric broadband fund, but a way to spread that cost. But there has to, but, you know, but we don't, of course, we don't know what is in there that is up to our specifications.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, there's one that we already serve and two that we don't. And if we're going to have to reimburse the other two incumbent providers for whatever's there, you know, um...
They do that.
They, they would have to do that?
Typically, a developer has to pay all of those costs from the annex.
And what's unknown is, is the value of their infrastructure depreciated or not? Some may be fully depreciated, so there's not an infrastructure cost, there's just a lost revenue.
They're still going to want something.
That's the lost revenue cost, yeah, but that is between...
Looking boulder.
That is between those areas.
You know.
That's something we're part of.
I think they actually calculate that cost and give it to us, and then we pass that on.
Exactly. But I mean, they're going to want something regardless. But I mean, there's, you know, I'm almost of the opinion, we, this one's a little bit more difficult. We got to try to figure out exactly what's in there.
We could, we can talk with XL Energy and Pooter Valley REA and ask them for their design standards and what they put in specifically, so we have more detail.
But, but again, this one, I really, it's, I really feel it, it would be definitely to the benefit of those folks that want to become, to be annexed. I mean, we do, again, we have those lower rates in the end, as the mayor said. In, in the long run, it's to their benefit. So, and then eventually in the long run, you know, we do have the best taste in water around, so. Eventually, they'll, maybe they'll come over that.
Councilmember Ray Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I think one thing we might be missing is, I remember when we just approved the bond issuance. The broadband bond is directly tied to the electric enterprise fund, too. So that we can't really separate, we, we couldn't. If, if there's an overflow cost increase in the electric fund to cover broadband expenses, and we don't have an electric, we've, we've done a split estate with our electric and the broadband services, we're in a whole heap of trouble. Because legally then, you can't, they're not an electric customer, they're a broadband customer. And, you know, it might be that we're not getting, well, it's through the, it's through the utility rate altogether. And the assumption is that when you get broadband, you get it through your electrical, being electrical customer service. And that's, and I just would want to make sure that, that because the utility is combined, that we can't just offer, we're not going to offer somebody who's not annexed in or not an electric customer broadband. We're not going to start offering broadband outside the city limits, that, for people that are non-customers. So, you know, that, to me, it, it, uh, there's such an upside to being part of the, the other attraction. The upside is that you get the broadband, you get the whole package, or you don't just get the split off of the broadband without being the utility customer. And I, I really think that, um, Councilmember Santos's point about what Boulder is going through right now, these utility companies are not going to give up customers without a fight, whether it's an REA or if it's XL Energy. So I think that, you know, it's, uh, those costs have to be factored in. But I think it's also the decision of that group of homeowners as to the upside of all, everything else that comes in with the annexation and, um, the new utility offerings with lower price, you know, and, and all that kind of stuff.
Councilmember Ray Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that, uh, we direct staff that any of the TDRs that want to be annexed into the city, that they be required to, uh, receive electric utility services from LPC with a strong preference being that they pay for it, but with the understanding that staff is the expert and can bring creative solutions should they feel that it's appropriate.
Case been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Maybe, believe last but not least on our list of questions that we have, and Nick is here, so if I get any of these wrong, I'll look to him. So currently, we have a rural cross-section in these subdivisions, um, which was fine at the time that they were built. And they do not have sidewalks currently, for the most part. And so that's one of the questions we have, is, is council okay with continuing to utilize that same cross-section that is currently in place on these projects? Or would you anticipate expecting, um, upgrades to that street cross-section as part of annexation? And currently, we have at least one property in the city, Willow Creek Estates, that also has a similar type of rural county cross-section. I believe they have sidewalk on one side, perhaps. But, but we do have precedent for that, um, within the city limits, so that's kind of the last thing. And again, when we come back, should either of the parties interested in annexing, um, we would come back with some, some O&M costs on each of those that kind of give you an idea of what that, um, the life of the pavement is currently on those roads that are constructed.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. So there's already a precedent for the rural standard. Since nothing's really going to be set in stone until somebody actually comes, I move that we allow an, an alternative cross-section reflective of the rural standard.
Case been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just one question.
Councilmember Ray Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And what would that mean exactly before we vote on it? So basically, just whatever's going on there right now, we would let them maintain that?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, we would maintain that.
Standard as it is.
Correct.
I guess I would, I would ask for a friendly amendment, that if they want to increase in the future, that they would be required to pay for those enhanced sidewalks, et cetera. Because what I wouldn't want is them all of a sudden to get pulled into the city on that standard and then come back and insist that they get sidewalks, et cetera. So I just wouldn't want them at a later date to be able to come back and say, yeah, we got in on the rural standard, but we're part of this city, so we want sidewalks. That's what I would be concerned about. So I guess I'm asking for a friendly amendment.
You made the amendment, okay. Do you accept that, to Bonnie, you second it? Yep, okay. All right.
Councilmember Ray Allen.
Yes, I'm not familiar. We, as far as, um, uh, you've given us information, we only have one subdivision. We have just a one-off on this issue. How big is Willow Creek Farm subdivision? Because I'm looking at aggregate number of houses here, it would affect, you know, around maybe under two-hundred houses. But if there's, you know, Willow Creek Farm is maybe twenty houses or thirty houses. That's a big difference than two-hundred and some.
Okay, same. So between Brian and I, and we, we think somewhere in twenty to twenty-five range. But there's also three unbuilt lots in Willow Creek Estates as well.
Yeah, but then we've got a difference between twenty-three and, again, you know, over, um, a hundred units. It's a different scale altogether. Yeah, I'm not comfortable, you know, supporting the motion.
Councilmember Ray Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. When we're talking about O&M costs, um...
Uh, when we're talking about O M. costs, um... Are they higher or lower at the county standard?
Good evening, Nick Wall from Engineering Services Manager. If we're not, if we're not maintaining curb and gutter, if there is a, a good, which I, in these developments that I've seen works, good bar ditches that, that property owners are maintaining and mowing, so that we're not out there having to do that. If they're maintaining the culverts that exist on their driveways, which are private driveways, um, then I don't think there would be a significant increase to, 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 um, the city from, from operations and maintenance. And as we said, what we'd normally look at is, is, um, going out and trying to evaluate the condition of the pavement. If you had a pavement that, that we felt had initially a, a, you know, 30-year life cycle, and half of that was gone, we could say, make a payment to us for half the cost of an overlay coming into it, so that what we start with to take over is, is up to standards, and then we'll take it on from there.
So some of these, uh, communities or subdivisions have built up around a, seemed like a county-wide, county-looking situation. Would, I mean, by requiring them to add sidewalks, is that gonna change the character of the neighborhood?
I don't believe we would require them to add sidewalks. I think exactly as, as Mayor Proton Bagley stated, the concern is, we have had some developments over the years where we tried some, some styles where we did not have sidewalks on both sides, or we, we tried a variety of things over the last 20 years. And, and in a lot of those situations, we've had people come back in and say, "We, we want sidewalks, why don't we have sidewalks?" And, and I think just as was stated, our point would be, if they wanted to add those sidewalks in, then that would be their cost to install those, and then we would take that over for maintenance as they did that. We would not wanna do that on a lot-by-lot basis, but on a development-wide basis, or a street-wide basis. But, but we would not necessarily require it of them.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Lewison.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just, just remember that we're all, this is all conceptual, so nothing is really set in stone, so...
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, friendly amendment to that motion. Let's vote. Okay, that passes six to one with Councilor Lewison defending.
Thank you, council. I believe we've tackled everything on our list, um, but the only remaining issue that I mentioned at the beginning is, one of these projects is not currently in our LPA, so we would have to amend the planning area jointly with Boulder County to, if we were to annex, and that would simply be part of the process, so we don't really need direction we would come forward with that as part of a annexation referral.
So, Joni, one of the conversations we had on this is that, my question to the Joni was, if we have a TDR, why was the agreement not amended with Boulder County at the time the TDR was created? And so in the future, if this ever comes up, then we really need, we're gonna run the other component with it, too, so we don't get in that position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Coombs, your last item is the desired results of government update, and Sandy Cedar will present this. Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager, and I am bringing to you, hopefully, draft, desired results of government that can be approved tonight as we move on with our budget prioritization process. So as you know, we started this process with you all at your retreat, those of you who were, uh, on council at the time, about a year ago in April, and have continued the conversation with you, and added, um, Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Christiansen's thoughts as well. And what you have in your packet is the vision statement established by the city council, uh, the description also, as described by city council, and the set of desired results of government, as started by you, and then with input from about 600 different folks, um, in focus groups and on surveys, both in Spanish and English, members of our health and human service agencies, economic partners, the St. Rain Valley School District, and all of your boards and commissions were invited. And what will happen from this point is, if you approve the desired results of government at this time, we'll take them and turn them into these result maps, which actually you see a draft of, I, I placed them at your desk, just so you can see them, same content. And, uh, with the desired results in the center, and all of the different aspects that make up this result around the outsides. So this is the same verbiage as you have in your packet, um, it's just laid out a little differently. My thanks to Ann Jordan and Theresa Malloy for putting that together. What we then do is, uh, what they are doing, while the strategic planning team is working on the desired results of government, the budget prioritization team have been working with staff to identify each of the services, um, and on a program level, um, and then they will start to take a look at costs and try to determine what are the costs for each of these programs. And then we do a scoring, which is where every, um, manager or department goes through and scores their own programs based on these criteria. How many of these desired results do they have influence on? And then we do a peer review after that. We will do all of that work prior to your June 27th retreat, and, um, on the public information, on the community involvement side, we'll take these descriptions, and we'll start to ask folks to help us prioritize, what does that look like for them? So if they had $1,000 to spend their resources, which is what we're talking about, is what is the right way to spend your resources in order to get the results that you desire, how would they spend that $1,000? And so this is where we now start to go. We kinda went deep in the community involvement process in trying to wordsmith each of these pieces, and how we go wide. So, um, our folks in ETS have already developed an online tool that allows people to add up to $1,000, and we'll get that out to lots of places. But we'll also be doing things like standing out in front of grocery stores and just asking people as they come out, "How would you spend your $1,000?", and conducting different groups in Spanish, as well as making sure that we just hit as many folks as we possibly can to get their input for you, so that you can see what the overall community priorities are of these five. So tonight, what I'm asking is, um, whether you would approve these desired results of government, or if you have any final changes before we now take these and ask the public how they would spend their resources if they were sitting in your chairs.
Councilor Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we accept and approve the, uh, desired results of government work that staff and council has done, and instruct staff to move forward with the, with soliciting the public feedback.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Councilor Lewison.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if the rest of you received the email from the Callahan House folks that they felt that one thing that was really a glaring, um, uh, piece that wasn't included is, under perhaps its vibrant amenities and opportunities, or, um, diverse housing options, I don't know where, um, or even under infrastructure, the fact that this, um, community values, um, history and our historic structures and infrastructure, um, and characteristics, that was not included. So, you know, the, the strong, um, value we have in our local culture, as evidenced by what's remaining of different eras of building types, um, was not reflected. So do you have a suggestion about how we could possibly get that in?
Yes. Mayor Coombs, members of council, um, you know, I took a look at all the different desired results of government, and we, we talk a lot about development, and in some respects redevelopment under the thriving economy section, but really under that vibrant amenities and opportunities for all, there's one section that talks about why people choose Longmont, because we're beautiful and we're welcoming, and to some extent, if you wanted to add, because we are historic, we are an authentic historic community. In my mind, that would capture some of those programs into that section. So if you did want to amend it, it seems like adding historic into that section would be the right place to do it.
So I'd like to, um, ask for friendly amendment that we can add that little bit in.
Second.
Sorry, a motion.
Yeah, you've got to, uh...
Accept it.
I don't have to.
No. Okay. Councilor Christiansen.
Uh, yes, I was, I was touched by that, because it is, I'm sort of, I like history, too. And I, what I was thinking is, you know, we do have, well, we do have some that have other sections, and we could just say, um, "The community that values are historic buildings, land, and heritage." I don't know. That's my wordsmithing for the night.
Councilor Bagley.
I agree. I love the historic nature of Longmont downtown, et cetera, but I guess the, I'm just looking at, um, we're talking about building types, and it might be very well, uh, uh, it might be possible in 100 years that those buildings should be gone. You know, I, I, I don't, I don't know. And so, um, I don't think that we should, right now, safe community, reliable, thriving economic climate, or general broad strokes, whereas I think that the historic preservation falls into all those, but that might change in the future. And I think that, I mean, labeling, uh, the core of our culture or our town, um, on a building type, when that might change in the future, maybe it's best, they go to all glass window houses, I have no idea. But, um, I would leave that up to future developers and councils and that kinda stuff, rather than dictating, you know, how we build it. That, that, that was my thought.
Mayor Coombs, if I could, um, just, I've been there for just a moment. So when I read the information from the Callahan House, I think they were speaking, I think they talked about and targeted historic buildings, but I think it was more than that. I think when you're talking about the kind of cultural activities and really a learning about our history, you know, in my mind, what, what I read from, from what Councilmember Lewison forwarded to me earlier was, um, really a discussion around just making sure that we remember the historic nature of Longmont as something that makes us special. And so, um, although I would agree that maybe talking about historic buildings is very specific for this type of exercise, adding it into what kind of community we are and what we value, you know, certainly does seem appropriate, I should say.
Councilor Christianson. Yeah, I don't think that, that's why I said buildings, lands, and, and, um, history. Because I don't, uh, what I would love to see is more of, uh, out by Sandstorm Ranch, for instance, when, when, um, Mr. Valamak and I were walking out there, um, they have, um, plaques around here that say, "Sandstorm Ranch was started by this family, and this is what they did for a living," and that comes just a sense of the character of, of our town, and, um, uh, an incredibly diverse character, from some of its goods, some of its bad, but when we have stuff like that, that emphasizes stuff, and it, in 100 years, when we're, we will all be dead, um...
Speak yourself.
Well, we'll be, well, we'll all be history. Well, I hope we're not part of the history, but I mean, you know, part of a town, if you look at Europe, what makes it so charming is that it's 500, no house is less than 500 years old, and yet they have brand-new, incredible houses in Holland that are as modern as anything you could possibly get. It also fits in, because it's, it's part of valuing your history, that you move forward, but you also remember your past. So I think that's what the people at Callahan House were talking about, just valuing history itself.
I'm gonna make a motion to re-extend the meeting.
To finish the rest of our agenda, too? Yep. Okay.
As much as I hate to.
Second.
Hold on, nope. Motion's on the floor, we get to debate.
Oh, okay, Councilor Lewison.
Unless we have two-thirds. I guess the, uh, this is oftentimes a contentious point for us, and, uh, the, the, the reason why, I mean, so, for example, I'm kinda white, we've been working on this for, how many months? A year? And so I think that, I mean, having a discussion when we're tired, we've been here since 5:30, I think is not a wise thing. And I also think there's like, uh, I also think that, uh, you know, the city charter says we should go home at 11, because that encourages normal people, you know?
Now, what's your normal?
No, you know, what, what I mean is, I'm a business owner. He's, he's a business owner. Gabe's a business owner, but, I mean, I don't, if people are never gonna run for council and participate in the process if we're here till 2 o'clock, or, I mean, I think it's in good public policy to follow charter. We can put on the talk till next time, we can think about it, we can digest the current debate, you know, but I just think that by, you know, always extending the meeting past 11 to do the work of the people, I think in the long term, we're actually doing a disservice to our city. But I will vote to continue, cause we have comments and we need to wrap up, but I would also, uh, you know, uh, ask that we, we end this discussion, extend it, and wrap it up quickly. That's what I'd, I'd ask. And there's a motion on, on the floor, so I can't make a motion, but that's what I want. That's what I want.
Okay, let's vote on extending the meeting. Okay, that passes six to one with Councilmember Moore descending. Councilor Bagley.
I would move that we table... I didn't move. What's the motion I did? See, I told you I'm white.
Yeah.
Oh, I rescind that motion, then. That's cool, I mean, the second we rescind it, right? And then before, I just moved that we table 11D until the next time we meet.
So Mayor Coombs, members of council, if, if you choose to do that, you're welcome to choose to do that, um, we had planned a full month involvement process starting April 1st with these desired results. If you don't have a meeting on April 1st, which looks like it's a distinct possibility, um, that means we wouldn't bring it back until the 8th, we wouldn't start the process until the 9th, and so that cuts off essentially two to three weeks of...
I guess we could, I would rather do it right than fast.
Absolutely.
So I would move that we table this until staff brings it back in a time and manner and fashion that would best serve staff and the public.
And I just got a, not a whisper in my ear, that, um, we're gonna start scoring these, I think, next week.
Yes.
So we on a very, very tight timeframe for budget reset, and I certainly apologize that this was last on your agenda for this.
Right, I guess the, I guess, uh, can we accept it, and then, can we accept it, and then talk about this particular amendment next time?
Yeah.
Well, I guess the, I guess, I guess, I guess what I'm saying, I, I guess, again, it goes back to my saying, I, I just wanna, I, I don't know what to do. Like I said, it's past 11 o'clock, I wanna go bed. So I guess I move that we table this until next time, and I would rather do it right and have the discussion and think about it than, than cut two weeks out of the public participation process than just throw it out there. So that's what I move. And I chalk up that dastardly motion to inability to think. Can we get on to the next?
Councilor Lewison. You know, I would be satisfied if we just had Sandy, gave Sandy direction to work in the heritage part, and that's what I would prefer, then we can finish this, and they can get started on their other stuff. I thought it was a valid comment, and, and everybody admitted. So sometimes when you, you see that last-minute thing, um, you realize what was left out.
Councilor Lewison.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you say something?
As we say, Jim just pointed out that we have three weeks to do the scoring on this, and like I said, we're on a, we're on a very tight timeframe. I certainly apologize for that, I wish it wasn't that way, but we're really aiming to get this information to use for your retreat, so that we can present, you know, the budget prioritization process in its entirety. And so if, if you decide to take two weeks to consider, then you're taking two out of the three weeks of the scoring process away from this.
Well, I, I think the heritage pieces are already in here, so I move that we accept the desired results for the, uh, basically the, the motion was already done. I move that we approve the desired results for the use during the next stage of the, uh, the budget prioritization process.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, and let's vote. Yeah. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Thank you for your understanding, we're working as fast as we can. Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's time for, uh, final call. I was delighted to be here, does anybody in the project like to speak at this time? Okay. It's time for mayor and council comments. Councilor Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to mention my business of the week, which would be Blue Skies Massage. Uh, Emma Bauer recently won third place in the state for her business plan and was given the award at the Governor's Mansion. She also went through the SBDC's Leading Edge Program, so, uh, uh, massage sounds great, Blue Skies Massage.
Um, thank you, Mayor. There was something in our, um, information packet on, um, with our legislative update and information regarding two bills. regarding two bills, and I just would like to, and I know it's late, but, you know, it's kind of our own fault, but to look at HB 141297, which talks about analysis of, to determine whether oil and gas operations have an impact on health, human health along the front range. I think that instead of not taking any position at all, staff is just like, you know, not proposing to take any particular position, I think that we should take a support position. I think it's what this bill, what a conference will give information to not only people in Longmont, but around the front range, and perhaps yield accurate information on these issues of public health and environment, that people continue to have challenges of dippery experts. And so I'd like to make a motion that we take a support position on HB 141297.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Councilmember Lewison.
I can't really vote on this because I haven't read the bill.
Councilmember Lewison.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's in our information packet, but I didn't know this was coming up this evening. I need more information before I can vote on this. Had I known that this was going to come up, I would have been a little bit more prepared.
Mayor Coombs, you can also direct me to bring it back at your next regular session if you choose.
Okay. Here. I guess, Councilmember Lewison.
Yes, I'd like to withdraw my previous motion and direct staff to bring it back at our next session, but I also would like to draw people's attention to the fact that, you know, when we have this other legislative matter that we didn't get a presentation on, that sometimes, you know, we were told that anything that was oil and gas, we would get information on, this got maybe buried a little bit too deep in the packet, and so it would be great to have a better discussion about it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, a motion is to direct staff to bring it back at the next meeting, next session.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Bagley. The motion is to direct Sandy to bring this back at a future council meeting. So let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, I just want to address one of the persons that talked at Public Dividing to be heard. You know, here, flood event, the most critical thing to me wasn't standing out and saying, gee, what a great mayor I am, and the city's safe, and they didn't have a control, but my main concern was, you know, first off, making sure that the people had places to sleep, so, I mean, we were all working together, moving cops to Memorial, Memorial Building and senior center, making sure everybody was safe, and then we had always been announced if we needed, let's enter the UDOT, all three congressmen wanted to meet this number of times, but the primary focus became getting that five-and-a-half-foot river that was running through the grounds and the championship greens, you know, even 10, 3 days after, to solve that problem. And that took us working together with the county commissioners, getting a FO4 permit, and that required the mayor and the mayor pro temp, and the county commissioners, and everybody to be on this group meeting. You know, to me, that was the most critical thing we had to deal with, so, as some people, you know, and I always felt that the citizens of Longmont were getting our information they needed because we never lost power, the staff we go, city staff always said, you know, here's the road closures, here's what's going on, so the information was getting out, and I don't think that I could have added much to it by standing up, you know, going home, taking time out, putting on a nice suit, and doing a press conference, so if you're a mayor that's going to do that and look pretty in front of cameras, you know, you probably a high-born mayor, but anyway, I, I do appreciate, you know, the, how the council came together and worked hard doing that, that whole process, so, anyway, so I'm going to say that, the flood. Other than that, my business of the week is, can you fit this in, what's my opinion is the way they give the young kids in this town jobs that need part-time jobs, they have the greatest kids that work at this place, they're high school kids, and they need flexible schedules, and I think they have an employer that creates to kids getting jobs, and, you know, an employer that's pretty brilliant, they make some work hard, it's a great, it's a great business that hires kids like that, so I appreciate that. So, so the danger we have.
As Sandy indicated, we've been watching the agenda related to flood items, and if there was anything that came up, we don't have anything scheduled for the study session, as she indicated in her previous session, so at this point, we do not need a study session next week. I thought we were going to need to change the study session to a regular session to do that other item, but at this point, we do not have a need for a study session, and I think that'll let staff catch up and bring some more.
Okay.
Flood and other issues that we're working on, so, unless council needs.
Pardon? Hi, I'm not April 3.
Okay.
No meeting next week.
City attorney in the comments.
No comments, Mayor.
No comments, Mayor. All right, this move is adjourned.